Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rockport Select Board to order for Tuesday, April 18th. As the usual warning, if you have a cellphone, please mute or otherwise turn it off. And if you have to take a call, please step out in, all the way outside. Our first order of business tonight is the public hearing on Articles 3 through 12. I was informed earlier today by the attorney for Josh Carl that they wish to withdraw Article 6. They do not want it to be on the ballot. They want to go through the normal process. But I do understand that there's some people here that want to speak to it. So I will ask for comments at when we get to that point in the public hearing. The way the public hearing normally works is that I will read the article. I will then ask if anyone wished to speak in favor of it. Anyone wishing to speak in favor can then come up to the podium, say their piece. If there's no more people speaking on that, I'll ask if anyone wishes to speak in opposition. When that is done, I'll ask if anyone wishes to speak neither for nor against. I will close that article and then go to the next article. And if nobody wants to speak on it, that's fine too. But I do ask, if you want to say anything, you do need to come to the podium. People at home and our recording of the thing, of this, it's live streamed. They cannot hear you if you're speaking from the chairs back there. So with that, moving to Article 3. That's the first of the articles we have on the public hearing this evening. Shall an amendment to Section 913 zoning district in the land use ordinance be enacted to change hotels/ins to a permitted use in the downtown quote core end quote area identified in subsection 913.3, subject to a cap of 40 rooms total in the aggregate, be permitted on a first come, first served basis? And I was also informed, and though it doesn't reflect in the, what I have here, is that it should read 40 sleeping rooms in total. So, does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? And hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Please step right up.
I am, anybody, love to see the village of Rockport be vital again. I still don't believe it is. Couple of high-end restaurants don't really do it for me. I'm soon to live, move out of the village, and I can't wait for that day. But I am concerned that it looks like we're selling 40 parking spaces that might be available downtown for 40 sleeping rooms in downtown Rockport. So that is a concern of mine. I've heard that around a little bit about town. So is this, to a degree, spot zoning for one hotel to allow this to happen? So that's just a concern of mine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak neither for nor against Article 3? And Jeff, can we move this forward to the actual, you know, what is listed here as town meeting warrant? Because this has the updated wording on it. It's further down in the packet, I think. Oh, maybe not. I guess not.
It's gonna be well down there.
Oh, it's well down in, okay. Then we'll move, move forward. Article 4. Shall amendments to Section 300 in the land use ordinance be-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, when, when do we, over here?
What?
Uh, when do we talk about this?
When we finish the public hearing, we go into our own discussions, which is-
I'll, I'll keep notes.
Yeah. Down under Item 4. New business.
Yep.
Okay, moving forward. Shall amendments to Section 300 in the land use ordinance be enacted to add definitions for heavy landscaping, landscaping, storage, and managed storage? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this amendment? Ah, there we go. We're getting up a little, up a little, up a little. There we go. Oh, one more. There. Technology is great. As I, as I said, does anyone wish to speak in favor of this amendment or article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. We'll move to Article 5. Shall an amendment to the zoning map be enacted to expand Section 906 mixed business residential zoning district in the following, on the following parcels located in West Rockport and currently designated as 902 Village Zoning District primarily 2, and in parenthesis, identified by map lot numbers as 17/19, 17/23, 17/25, 17/107, 17/107-1, 17/113, 18/73, 18/73-1, 18/73-2, 18/73-3, 18/73-4, as well as added, as add two small areas identified by map lot numbers as part of 17/26 and part of 17/27 to the adjacent Section 904 residential and 908 rural zoning districts? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article?
Does anyone understand that article?
There was a map provided with this, but I don't know if we can find it, but it does lay out those.
Would it be helpful if I skipped through the materials now or save it for discussion?
I prefer you save it for our discussion. This is the public hearing. So, hearing no one wishing to speak in favor of this, does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? And hearing none, does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. We will, and as I said earlier, Article 6, the attorney has requested, for Josh Carl, has requested that this be dropped from the warrant, and so we will be. My understanding is that some people may wish to speak in regard to this article. So I will go through the normal process. But be assured, when we get to our section, we will scratch it and all the subsequent articles will be renumbered forward after our meeting is complete. So, I'm gonna read it. Shall an amendment to the zoning map be enacted to expand the Section 907 Rockport mixed business slash residential zoning district to include a parcel located behind 465 West Street and currently designated as Section 904 residential zoning district, identified by map lot number 25/133? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? We have someone?
Well, I recognize that this might be superfluous at this point, but I just wanted to go on record. I did speak to the planning board, and that's probably why this has been withdrawn for the moment. And the reason that I wanted to speak against this is, this is the map, and this is where we live, right up here, in this little spot here.
Would you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, Emily Lusher. I live on Park Street. And, so, we live in this little box right here, that backs up essentially on the property. It doesn't abut the property, but it, it's within range. And our neighbors in this lot, we've spoken with them as well, and their lot goes all the way back almost to West Street, and it would abut this new zoning. And the reason that we're concerned about this is Rockport Granite is a really noisy operation. They're all, and they are dropping big loads of rock, they're grinding rock, they're cutting rock, and it's really noisy all day. And we did have a problem with them. Last summer, they were running their heavy machinery all night, and we've been working with the code enforcement officer because that doesn't fit, that they're not supposed to do that. And the only reason I bring that up is because there's an attitude here on the part of the owners that they can do whatever they want. And because, and we've had, we've talked, called, we were told we had to call police dispatch, and they would go down there and tell, and confirm that this machinery was running at night, and it happened over and over and over again. And one of your members is very well aware of that as well. So it's, there's an attitude on these people's part that they can do their thing. So that's why I find, I think it's disturbing to create more land for them to do their business. And I suspect, I can't tell for sure without going on somebody else's property, but I suspect that they are already using that piece of property as a dumping ground for their granite tailings, the stuff they cut off. So they're already using a residential piece of land for, yeah, it's rocks, but still. So that's why I'm very much against expanding that, their operation closer to the residential section where we are and where other people are. And we spoke to the planning board, and so that's, I think that's what I wanted to say. And the only other thing is that you should be aware that when you cut granite, you release silica, which is a very dangerous substance. Now, it may not blow all the way up to our house, I don't know, but you have a hazardous material that's being created in this operation, and so I think you might want to think about whether that belongs so close to a residential neighborhood. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also note that we received a letter to, mostly to that same effect, from Andrew Gallison, a resident at 400 Park Street. So, does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? And does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? I see puzzled faces out there. Okay, I'm gonna move forward. Article 7. Shall an amendment to Section 1003 Architectural Review Standards in the Land Use Ordinance be enacted to clarify several provisions regulating non-residential development? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. Then I move to Article 8. Shall an amendment to Section 900 zoning districts in the land use ordinance be enacted to standardize numbering and formatting throughout this chapter? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. I will move to Article 9. Shall amendments to Section 917 permitted use table in the land use ordinance be enacted to change the applicable zoning districts where the following uses are permitted, whether by special exception or as, or as hyphen of hyphen right? Affordable housing, art galleries, barber shop slash salon, boat storage commercial, boat storage slash shipyard and sales, outdoor recreation, and restaurants? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. We'll move to Article 10. Shall an amendment to Section 918 dimensional tables in the land use ordinance be enacted to correct certain minimum street frontage requirements applicable to the, Section 907 Rockport missed, Rockport mixed business slash residential zoning district? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? And hearing none. I will move to Article 11. Shall the town accept the dedication in fee simple of all of Bayberry Lane, parentheses, considered part of Ashley Terrace on the Bay Ridge subdivision plan first approved by the planning board on 10, December 10, 2003, end parenthesis, and part of Hawthorne Drive comprising approximately 1,600 feet of private right-of-ways located off of Old County Road as shown in the subdivision plan recorded in Knox County Registry of Deeds at Book 16, page 179, as amended, and to accept and establish such ways as municipal roads to the town-owned and, to be town-owned and maintained? There is an explanation that accompanies this. The town manager's office is holding a check from Richard Nightingale, developer of Bay Ridge IV subdivision, in the amount of $7,602 to cover the costs of final repairs and improvements to the roadways in question, to be completed as soon as possible. This cost estimate is provided in a memo dated April 4, 2017, by Public Works Director Michael Young. If approved, this work must be completed to his satisfaction. The his will, I believe, be referred to Michael Young, not the town manager.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just make a clarification?
Yes.
There's been a change to that, that explanation, which residents may want to be aware of. The check is in the amount of $6,100. The thinking being that the ditching work, which makes up the remainder of that, was gonna be done by, was accepted and approved by the town previously, and was gonna be done by the town, and also Bob Duke, a lot of the ditching is in front of Bob's house, which he's doing a lot of construction and landscaping in front of his house so that can get taken care of as, as part of that whole process.
And we do have a memo that was sent to us by Mr. Duke.
Just wanted to clear, it just makes sure it was clear to people.
Okay, with that clarification, it's now $6,100 instead of $7,602. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this amendment? And we have someone.
Thank you. John Duke, resident of Hawthorne Drive and somehow de facto representative of the neighborhood. I want to, first of all, thank members of this board, members of previous boards, our town manager, Rick Bates, Jamie Francamano, members of the planning board, ORC. This has been a long, long road to get here, pardon the pun. We have worked for many years, and we've tried on multiple occasions to try to find a way to take what seems to be a pretty logical idea of a flat piece of road that was built to town specifications on a subdivision approved in 2003, I think, and bring it before the voters at some point for their consideration as to whether or not it should be a town road. You all have heard, the four of you, Rick, others have heard, my, my beliefs on the, the road acceptance ordinance as it exists. I think there's, it's some flawed logic. I think it exists to prevent a problem that existed in 2006 that we don't currently have in this town. And I think that there are some bigger picture conversations that should be had generally about what sort of town we want to be, what sort of town we want to become, what sort of town we are. And I believe that that ordinance stands in the way of a lot of those types of development, and, and development not in the big D, you know, putting a, you know, a skitter through a, a, a piece of highly valued property, more in the sense of emotional value, but in terms of what do we become? Do we become a broad scope of town where you have people who are working and living and breathing in the town, and able to, to work in the town they live in, and vice versa? That's, this starts some of that. And this is our problem. This is a problem that we've had. You've all heard our spiel and my spiel far too often. But I think it speaks to another issue, which is, I think there's a bigger conversation that we're starting to have in Rockport, which is, what are we trying to do and where are we going as a community? And this is one path to do that. I think that this, I hope that you will support this, the four of you here tonight. Obviously, it's been a lot of compromise, a lot of forethought and thinking by all of your, on all of your parts, and the ORC, and, and just to get to the change of the ordinance to get to this point. But I think that there's a larger issue here at play too, and I, and I hope that outside of this meeting, outside of whatever happens at the polls in June, assuming you, and your wisdom, infinite wisdom, to put it on the ballot, that a larger conversation has begun about where we're headed and what are the right types of development. And we've got a great planning, planning office, we've got great people on our boards and committees. We have a comp plan that's 13 years old. I was sitting up there when we approved it, and I'm sitting back there now, thankfully, safely. But I think that there are some bigger questions that we need to ask, and it's hard to answer those as we've all been working through this. And I hope, and I trust that you will see again, in your infinite wisdom, again, the plug here to try to butter up the situation, but to see that this is approved. This has been a lot of work on a lot of people's parts, and it's the right thing to do. And I think all of you who have put in work to make this day happen can see that, and hopefully we'll see so soon. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. Okay, says we should. Article 12. Shall an ordinance entitled, and this is in quotes, emergency management ordinance, end quote, be enacted? And we did receive the copy of it, I believe, right here. Last year, I think it was last year, we adopted at the select, at the select board level an ordinance similar, very similar to this. A policy. A policy. To make it official, we need to take it out to the town as an ordinance. It, it carries far more weight when we deal with places like FEMA or EMA and things like that. So, does anyone wish to speak in favor of this article? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this article? Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this article? Hearing none. Rick, I've got a question for you. The next one, which is labeled Article "To Be Determined." That is the non-binding question that we're putting out. Is this, that also supposed to be on the public hearing tonight?
On a notice.
No, it's not. It's a, it will be done at town meeting. I believe.
No, this is gonna go on the secret ballot.
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on the secret ballot, yeah.
Yeah.
No, but it doesn't, it doesn't require it. That's right.
Recommendation from the Select Board.
Yeah, it doesn't require a recommendation.
Okay. So, then I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Did you, oh, you, you held up your hand a little bit.
I was stretching.
Moving to the next section, which is our, our, some of the announcements for this evening. Candidate nominating papers are available. You see the town clerk. Nominating papers are due back no later than the close of business, that's 5:00 PM on Friday, April 28, 2017. Positions up for election in June are: two three-year terms for the Select Board, currently held by Mr. Parker and myself; one two-year term for the Select Board, that is to fill out the remainder of Brendan Reardon's term. Yeah. Ms., Ms.- It's plural. Yeah. Three three-year terms for the Budget Committee, Mrs. Stephanie Campbell and Heaven Bartlett, and Mr. Tom Murphy, Thomas Murphy. One three-year term to the Library Committee, currently held by Mr. Paul Charbonneau. One one-year term for the Library Committee to fill out the remainder of a term that is now vacant. And one three-year term for Director of MSAD Number 28 School Board to serve concurrently on the five-town CSD School Board currently held by Ms. Faith Vautour. Tom?
Could I ask a question on that?
Yes.
How many folks have currently taken out papers for the Select Board?
Two.
We've got three open seats and two people taking out papers. Something wrong about that. I know this is a thankless job, and I'm speaking primarily to the people back there, but come on, come on, please.
Okay.
Help us out here a little bit. Thank you, Civic Bone.
There's 10 more days.
10 more days.
Yep. 25 signatures is all that's needed.
I'll give you one, even if I don't like you.
27 or 28, but that's okay. Town meeting information. Election Day is Tuesday, June 13, 2017. Polls open at 8:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM in the town, Rockport Town Office, the Richardson Room. Please enter through the front doors and follow the signs. Town meeting will be Wednesday, June 14, 7:00 PM, in the Opera House Assembly Room or Meeting Room right upstairs, and it will be livestreamed. And the Select Board organizational meeting will be on the Opera House stage immediately following the conclusion of open town meeting. New business. We need to take our votes now to place on the warrant these articles that we just went through, Articles 3 through 12, less number 6. We always seem to have some confusion this, when we get to this point. When do we put them on, and when do we take our recommendation votes? For purposes to make sure we remember to do it, I put it on the agenda for tonight. That's two separate. But if we want, as we put each article on, we can take our recommendations at that same All right. The first article we need to discuss is Article 3. Shall an amendment to Section 913 zoning district in the land use ordinance be enacted to change hotels/ins to a permitted use in the downtown core area identified in subsection 913 dot 3, subject to a cap of 40 sleeping rooms total in the aggregate, to be permitted on a first come, first served basis? The planning board recommends 5, 4, 0 against, and 0 abstain. And they did add the word "sleeping" in there to make sure it was clear as to what rooms were for. So, do you have something that you want to say to us regarding to this? Or do you want to hear our discussion first, and any questions that we have relate to you?
He's just getting ready for, he's getting ready to answer questions.
All right.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I'll point out also that there are members of the ORC and the planning board here, and the planning board here, to also, if we want to open up the discussion on nuances of, of these, or if I state anything wrong from my notes from that meeting.
Okay.
So that's an available resource to us.
Then I will open this, well, first, can I have a motion to place this on the warrant?
Move to place Article 3, or currently numbered Article 3, on the warrant as read.
Second. Moving seconded.
And I would point out, just as a general thing, that the, the public hearing notice, which is sent out, the articles in that notice are in draft form, and so we do have the prerogative to change those articles as we place them on, about which in case, in fact, we are doing with this Article 3 by adding the word "sleeping rooms" to make it more clear. So, just in case anybody was wondering about that.
Owen?
So I guess I have a question for Mr. Duke. You were talking about the 40 parking spaces. You're not, you're not insinuating that there was a, there's a direct, by allowing this, that the hotels would be able to purchase 40 parking spaces? What you're referring to is just the thought that if you have a 40 sleeping room, then in theory, if that was all filled up, that would be 40 parking spaces within the downtown region that could otherwise be used for the general public, but it's now gonna be occupied with?
There's a finite number of parking spaces.
If you're gonna make more than a yes/no answer, please.
And I guess I was just ensuring that I somehow didn't misinterpret what we were doing. You know, maybe I overlooked the fact that in addition to a hotel, we're also selling parking spaces, just trying to get on the same page.
Not at all. I, I was making a bit of a metaphor at that.
I, I was making a bit of a metaphor at that, because we do have a, a finite number of parking spaces in town, and there's been no effort on the town's part to purchase land for, you know, surplus parking or whatnot, even though those opportunities existed over the last three, four decades that I've been around. All I'm saying is, we have to tread very carefully if this is something that we want.
I would point out that this district is right here along Central, and we have a two-hour parking limit on the road, on the street, though we haven't been enforcing it, but we could. Also, the hotels would need to, I'm, I would think, and Jamie, here's, this sort of is a question to you, wouldn't they need to have off-street parking for the people who will be staying overnight?
And I can let Jamie go ahead, too, but in fact, that lot is owned by the same group that owns the property, that a hotel would go on, so it's already theirs. It's, it's, it's public parking by virtue of, of significant generosity from both the previous owner and the present owner.
The most economical answer I could think of that was helpful at the planning board public hearing is that many other uses are already permitted uses, which would have a greater demand on parking. And so the, the, the chance, we hope that it will come to pass, that the owner will develop a hotel on one of those lots, or that another property owner in this area will take advantage of this new permitted use. It does come with a drag on parking. The planning board has very wide discretion to waive any parking requirements that, that might go with it, and it's an opportunity, I think, for shared use because of the, the hours of use for different uses that, that might overlap in a, in a worth, in a, in a convenient way with hotel use, but there might also be a serious demand on parking that results from this. And so, no promises on that count. A few years ago, the town did complete a study that surprised everyone with the, the abundance of available parking in the downtown, but this body and others in town have discussed it to great lengths, that, that some parking seems convenient to some people and not to others. And so, the short answer is, there's no guarantees, this, if this project that the Smiths have discussed comes to pass, there'll be a demand on parking, and, and we'll feel it in the downtown. But it's recommended by the planning board and, and staff for good reason.
And does this board feel a need for the explanation of, of how 40 came about and why?
I'm familiar with it, but the others may.
Okay. So it was, it was basically, the, the planning board and the ORC, and again, chime in if I'm wrong, between the two bodies had a whole range of, of ideas of that, some saying, why have any restriction at all to the amount of rooms, some saying, let's, let's try, let's come up with a number that allows us to, to start this concept and then see if it, if it balloons into something where it needs more than 40. And it was decided that, that 40 was a number that didn't appear to favor the first and only hotel that would come into this district, so that presumably the first hotel would have less than 40, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't, as some people said, be deciding the winners and the losers. So it, it, it's a, it's a compromised number.
And I would add that the reasoning of putting an, an aggregate number limit on the zone was that at the ORC level, there was a lot of discussion about having the downtown villageri be a vibrant commercial district, and we didn't, the committee didn't want to see the entire district be taken up as a hotel, and wanted to have some mixture in the commercial establishments that were there, and felt that this was the best way to, to do this. And by enacting this language, too, we can, we can see how it goes. As Jeff mentioned, you, you start out and see how it goes, and, and if we have to change the number, that's an easy thing to change a few years down the line, but I think for right now, it's a good way to, in my opinion, I think the, the presence of a hotel can add to our vibrant downtown district. We don't want to see it all hotels, at least that's my opinion.
Quick question. How many rooms do you have on Bayview? The one that you just, I'm just trying to conceptually wrap my brain around what 40 rooms would look like in one structure.
My name is Stuart Smith. My wife, Mary Ann, and I, and our son Tyler, are very involved with the hotel business in Camden, and we came to the planning board to talk about this and to try to get it as a permitted use in Rockport, because we would like, in the future, to build a small hotel in Rockport, and it would probably be about 20 rooms, 22 rooms. The hotel we just completed, when we renovated, the 16 Bayview, the old Bayview Street Garage building, has 21 rooms in that. We also own Grand Harbor Inn, which has 10 rooms, that's in the building right at the water, and we renovated the, originally the Camden Sonic Temple Building, which is where Lord Camden is now, and that has 36 rooms in that. Probably a hotel over here, we would look at probably 20 to 22 rooms, 23 rooms, sleeping rooms. That's a pretty good size as far as being able to, you know, accommodate a wedding party, for example, or a small meeting, but it's also a good size just to operate, you have to have a certain number of rooms to efficiently operate, staffing. As far as the parking side of things, we do own the parking lot that is out on Sandy's Way, behind, starts behind the Opera House and runs all the way to Main Street, and I believe there's about 70 parking spaces there right now. We found with the hotels we already own, the Camden ordinance requires you to have one parking space per hotel room, and so you can do that by either owning spaces or leasing spaces off-site. We own quite a few spaces down at Public Landing Area. I think we have 36 parking spaces down there that are shared between 16 Bayview Hotel and three other restaurants and two retail stores and three offices. So it's a, you know, the parking kind of ebbs and flows depending on the time of day. From the hotel use, the hotel rooms at Lord Camden Inn, we have private parking that we own off-site, it's about a 100-yard walk, it's right across the Menox Mill, kind of behind Eric's Barber Shop. So we actually own parking spaces in that, we own 36 parking spaces over there. And I would say that, so we meet the ordinance all the time by either owning onsite or leasing spaces, but generally, I would say only about half the people that stay at the hotel require parking space. A lot of people are guests of people that live in town, and their children have lived in, their children live in Camden or, or the area, and they come, and, you know, we have one woman that stays with us for a month every January, comes to see her kids, has no car, kids come, you know, her son comes and picks her up. So it's, it's interesting, because really only about half the people utilize the parking, so. Other side to that is the parking is kind of, I mean, some people stay all the time and they park their car, if they have a car, and then, and then they'll walk around town. But a lot of people, if they're just spending one night, they show up sometime between 4:00 and 6:00 or 7:00 or later, and, you know, they may leave early in the morning. So it's a great overlap of parking spaces, and, and unless the spaces be reused by other people, other things going on at the same time, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just to follow up on that point, our ordinance is very similar, I just double-checked it, two parking spaces starting out, and then one for every sleeping room. And again, the planning board would have very wide discretion at, at waiving the number or customizing that, and working out as a condition of approval, any calculations with the owners or others involving shared use of the parking. Other than that, Ken really took my, my only important point, which is that this is meant to increase the vitality of the downtown, and it's the, the single thing we can do that has the best chance of that now. The, I'd go a step further to acknowledge what Mr. Duke is saying, that the, the downtown has some glaring weaknesses right now in terms of what commercial establishments there are, and what important parts of our community don't feel well served by them, but this is a step in the right direction.
Thank you. No further discussion? Now, this vote is to place it on the warrant. All in favor of placing Article 3 on the warrant? That is unanimous. We now take our recommendation votes. All in favor of this warrant? Or do we want to have discussion before we do? Oh, look like you want to.
No, 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 no. I, I would say that is, it would appear as a four.
Yes. All in favor of this article? That is for, for, and since we have everybody accounted for, and none are against and none abstained. Number four, Article 4. Shall an amendment to Section 300 in the land use ordinance be enacted to add definitions for heavy landscaping, landscaping, storage and mini-storage?
Move to place Article, currently numbered Article 4, on the warrant as read.
Seconds. Moved and seconded. Do we have discussion on this?
Well, everybody else has had a lot of discussion on this. So, the mini-storage, the whole idea of mini-storage, while at first blush looked as though it was a, about the same as storage units, which are, are allowed in that district, is that correct?
Storage buildings.
Storage buildings, yeah. It, it seems that the preponderance of official bodies seem to want to not support this. Is that accurate?
It's certainly vague.
It's certainly vague. Very few people like this.
Well, one of the issues that came up is that the ordinance, as it's currently written, allows storage units in, I think, is it the 907? I can't remember the district.
In many zoning districts.
Actually, not, not so many.
And boat storage, you know, has a revered status.
Allows storage buildings, but specifically prohibits mini-storage.
Yes.
And the problem with the ordinance is that these terms are nowhere defined currently. And so the ORC worked to, to come up with the definitions, and in with that was a discussion about the pluses and minuses of allowing mini-storage, and
Right.
We found that there was some comprehensive plan history there, that it was not allowed as, as being something that the, the folks wanted to have in, in Rockport at that time. But we, the ORC worked hard, I think, to come up with a definition of mini-storage, and found that the most objectionable piece of it was the appearance of the multi-roll-top door buildings. And so, the definition that's being proposed for mini-storage talks specifically about that, about the, the number of exterior doors on, on any building that would be for that use. The definition of storage buildings would allow storage buildings to be subdivided into any number of units, as long as the units are accessed from the interior of the building, so it goes to the appearance of the building.
Right. And the, there certainly was a lot more discussion about mini-storage, and also it brought to mind to those who have the enough institutional memory from the comprehensive plan process, gas stations and drive-through, these three, well, there's two uses, and one is sort of a, a site characteristic, that were considered the most objectionable, and the ORC, knowing better than any group, I think, what took place in those conversations 12, 13 years ago, saw no reason to go backwards on that now, the, in response to a request from a property owner who would like to see mini-storage permitted in this zoning district. However, they gave guidance to me as staff, don't stop here, this is considered a step one. For now, this particular property owner or anybody else inquiring doesn't know what's prohibited, because mini-storage is not defined. And it might be that this applicant or another one considers their own development potential for their properties and decides to construct something that stops short of this use, mini-storage that's permit, that's prohibited, so that it, it could be useful to the same property owner, but for now, certainly appears objectionable to that property owner, and you guys have additional correspondence from him. The, 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 the point of this amendment, though, is to put a definition in the ordinance, and if that passes in, in a future year, if the select board assigns this task, or if the select board receives a request from a petitioner to do a zoning amendment, you'll have something to, the voters will know what's being requested. At least now, there'll be a definition. There's certainly more to say about the landscaping uses, which was a, a very in-depth process where we brought in as many business owners as we could find who had had concerns with the definitions of landscaping and construction, which right now is a use in the land use table but not defined, and I can go into that in more detail, but it was an example of very in-depth participation in public-private partnership and, and a really focused amendment that involved the research of other communities, and happy to go into that one in more detail also.
Which communities did you research?
These, wow, a lot of them were local, Rockland, Warren, Camden, Belfast, but the definition that we wound up building off of actually came from a California community, and then we, we changed it quite a bit. And the, I believe that was Santa Monica, actually, just from researching definitions at a planner's resource. And storage, I think we took that from, primarily from the research that we, we took on, actually, the research that I brought in was on behalf of property owners, and said, how to get your storage facility approved? And this was useful to the board, the committee, but mostly it, that, that was an original definition.
Thank you.
The, the landscaping has general, the other definitions were usually focused on the contractor's yard as the use, but this was simpler for us to, to pick the specific trades involved and focus on that.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor of placing this on the warrant? That's for. And our recommendation? All in favor of, of recommending this?
Let's define things.
For, for, none against, none abstained. Moving to Article 5. Shall an amendment to the zoning map be enacted to expand Section 906 mixed-business residential zoning districts on the following parcels located in West Rockport and currently designated as Section 902 Village Zoning District, primarily to, and I'm gonna skip all of those, as well as add to small areas identified by, and I'm skipping that, to the adjacent Section 904 residential and 908 rural zoning districts? And the planning board has recommended five in favor, no abstains and none, or none against and no abstentions.
Turn this to page eight of, page nine of 19.
Thank you, Jamie.
This packet was hyperlinked from where you started in my planner's notes, but if you don't have it in front of you, you'll wish you did. Anybody else see copies out there?
Page nine?
Nine of 19.
Map looks like this.
Trying to take advantage of hyperlinks, because they're so easy and powerful, but I don't think, I don't think it reached everyone the way it should. So that map also, I think, oh, you're in the document, can, Rick?
Did we have a, did anyone move to?
And just go down to that one.
Can I have a motion before we go into discussion? Can we have a motion?
Move to place currently numbered Article 5 on the warrant as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Now we can go to an explanation.
Do you want me to do, take, put that on screen?
You have pages on? Say again? Nine of 19, but.
But I don't think you have the document yet. Yeah, you, you're just on his notes.
Click on one of those hyperlinks that says 2017 amendments that you've been, that you've gone by. There.
Insert map?
There you go. 217, 2017 amendments. If you can, go to the website.
Okay.
All right. So the, the, the draft language, the second one, it's only clickable over there, yep. Page nine of 19, super. So this drawing, you will see, shows a large chunk of the 902 zoning district, which is the village zoning district, in this case in West Rockport, and is an opportunity for, for that village to grow its commercial. And is an opportunity for that village to grow its commercial might. There you go. So, we're south of ninety and on both sides of seventeen. The West Rockport Post Office is right in the middle of this drawing, and many other commercial establishments, the, there's a law office, a medical office, several other, two or three small manufacturing offices, I would call them, or sales. And on either end of it, of this drawing, are two properties owned by Mike Robertson's business Rhino Services and Craig Mitchell's, which is Rockport Landscape And Design. So, the, the problem specifically that got put on the ORC's docket by the Select Board was, can you solve this problem of landscaping in the 902? At times, it seems like landscaping means something very minor, this was touched on in the definitions, some small equipment that you roll up into your trailer and take with you from job to job, and if you keep it at your contractor's yard and you happen to be next door to residential properties, you're not bothering anybody. Other heavy landscaping or other trades that now would match that definition might have large stockpiles, might break a lot of rock and make a lot of noise, as one of the neighbors was describing. And so, those are heavy landscaping and are only permitted if those definitions are approved with an extra buffer area between them and residential. So, with that problem solved, we realized that the only thing standing in the way of this particular zoning district growing to its potential with these new owners was simply to change the zoning district boundaries here. So, elsewhere in the 902, you won't be able to have that heavy landscaping. Here, since it won't be 902 anymore if this is approved, those uses with the extra buffering and screening standards that are written into it would be permitted because it would become 906. And many existing uses would simply become conforming because the businesses there have grown beyond the expectations of mere village properties. So, you know, there's a lot more to discuss, but this is basically a chance to, we often talk about, are we spreading the resources around in terms of infrastructure? But this is human resources. We've put a lot of time and energy into a zoning district expansion for West Rockport to grow business opportunity there.
One question I have is, why these cleanup areas?
There are parts of parcels where the parcel was split between two zoning districts, and it just made sense to put the entire parcel in one district. For example, that little 908 one, that's, that's all one parcel up through there, and it was in two separate zoning districts, and it seemed to make sense to clean it up to put, so that one parcel, the seventeen slash twenty-seven, was all in one district.
And, and the way that it gets to be part of an orphan like that is usually something that says a thousand feet from the road or something like that. So, we have, we have a history of trying to have our zoning follow property lines as opposed to arbitrary distances from something else.
Question, though. It does say, "Part of seventeen twenty-seven," is that 908 portion that part of seventeen twenty-seven?
Well, currently, 908 is most of seventeen twenty-seven, but the little triangle that you see there that has, that's currently in 902.
And they want it in 906, though.
Well, no.
They want it in 908?
What we wanted to do, what the ORC wanted to do was, and since we're taking the opportunity to change this larger area of 902 to 906, to say, well, let's look at these adjacent properties where there's a little tiny part of them in a different zoning district, let's put the whole property in one zoning district. So, in this case, the large majority of seventeen twenty-seven was in 908, so this change just puts it all in 908. Same thing with the parcel across the street, the 904, where there was a little chunk of it in 902, it made more sense to have the entire parcel in one zone.
Okay.
Right, if it got colored in, it's because today it's 902. So, those would be, if we didn't put them somewhere, they'd stay marooned in 902.
And then you have issues of somebody who comes along and has the parcel and wants to do something on the parcel, and they've got part of the parcel in one zoning district and part in a different zoning district, it opens up all kinds of issues.
Like a garage on one side and a house on the other, and if it's connected, you've just got to have it right on the right line.
Well, you start to have sidearm setbacks in your own property.
And the discussion of this at the ORC level, when it first came, we started looking, well, how can we allow landscaping businesses in 902? And the difficulty of that is that the 902 district as it currently is defined is all over the place and in different uses. You've got this 902, which is over here, but there's also a section 902 in Glen Cove. And trying to find a way to, to allow landscaping use on a couple of these lots here, which are big lots and are well-suited for that type of business, and write something that yet doesn't allow it in the other areas of 902, which are more residential or we wouldn't want it, we just were going nowhere with it. So, we looked at saying, well, let's, if we change this whole section here to 906, which makes more sense because 906 is the mixed business residential along Route 90, and I may be wrong on the history of this, but I think that the 906 came in after the 902 and then bisected it and left this other little chunk down here kind of orphaned. And so, now it makes more sense, you know, the development along Route 17 down there to do it this way, that was the thinking of the ORC, and any ORC that moves here can feel free to.
Yeah, I think, I think it was more of a corridor situation where we just didn't think, you know, far enough ahead because the comprehensive plan sort of painted with a broad brush first, and in that sense, yes, but I don't think ever by statute, it was just as it was being created, it was like 906, 906, and then corridor, I'm sorry, you know, 902 and then corridor of 906. So, we're, we're sort of taking that sense of corridor and now enlarging it to be sort of ground-truthing.
Okay, good explanation, thank you.
Only have one final question. Were all the landowners of these parcels notified about this?
No, and there's good reason for that. The statutory and ordinance requirements, when you have more than a few parcels, allow you and require you to put it in a paper of general notice. And the property owners arguably are not more impacted than the neighbors and then the next neighbors. And so, as soon as you start picking who do you send the notice to, you might fall short and someone feels that they were not treated fairly. So, it is possible to take a long list and send out more information to the voters in advance of town meeting, but the, the process so far has just been to follow the statutory requirements.
And I will add there that one of the things when the ORC first considered this, that we tasked staff, meaning Jamie, to do, was to go out there and look around and find out, if we make this change, are we going to make anything, you know, more non-conforming than it already is? And Jamie came back and reported to us that, from his inspection, that all the properties out there would actually become more conforming, and, and it seemed like the use would be consistent.
I'm actually selling myself short now that I remember, Owen, I did mail and hand-deliver notices in the Hammond Bray subdivision, which you can barely see a corner of in the bottom left of this picture.
That's the blue there.
Excuse me, but it's not, not designed to show that, I think, what's that, Robinson Street, I think, goes up there?
Robinson Drive.
Robinson Drive, okay, so I hit all those lots, and most of the ones, that was formerly, I think, Ames Family Land, over to the other side of the picture, in the two 904 areas. But just as, can I think, you put it, it's ground-truthing, you know, that was just really me just going out and trying to learn about it and making sure that they were aware of discussions that we were having and seeing if we could gather any input. That has not been a formal process of notice beyond the newspaper.
We did have some of the Hammond Bray owners come into an ORC meeting.
Yep, we got a good response.
Hear what they had to say, too, was favorable on their part.
Nope, I'm good.
They both are benefiting by a really large buffer area that's, that's existing from.
Okay, no further discussion? All in favor of placing this on the warrant? And then the recommendation vote, all in favor of endorsing this as a four vote, that is also unanimous. Article Six, we have withdrawn.
Well, I do think we probably need to vote on that because it was put on the public hearing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Wait, what?
Vote not to put it on or put it on.
If we're not going to put it on, we have to, we have to go on record as voting that because it was put on the public hearing warrant.
Okay.
Right.
Or on the public hearing notice.
So, I, I think that we should have a bit of a, of a dialogue because we've already, this is already, this kind of move has already come under some scrutiny, as Brendan pointed out on a, on a meeting, that seemingly got arbitrarily canceled by someone aside from us. So, I would say, I would invite either the chairman or Jamie to just report on some background of this and then where we're at right now.
Well, first, we would need to have a motion. Shall An Amendment To The Zoning Map Be Enacted To Expand Section 907 Rockport Mixed Business Slash Residential Zoning District To Include A Parcel Located Behind 465 West Street And Currently Designated As Section 904 Residential Zoning District Identified By MAP Slash Lot Number 25 Slash 133?
So, move.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Moved what?
To place on.
To place.
This is just the motion to place.
This is so if.
You might have made a motion not to place.
No, you generally, generally don't make motions in the negative.
Make it in the positive.
Can, but in this case, that's okay, I think.
That's where the general.
So, what did you want for background?
Well, I just think it, you know, we owe it to the people watching, and we'll have you to just at least.
Give you some background.
Give thirty seconds of what this is about and then why it's not desired to be on.
Sure, so I'll just give you some background, just kind of on the, the noise aspect, like Emily alluded to, I was, I had done work at Rockport Granite, and then I acted as a little bit of an intermediary, whatever that word is, between Emily and Rockport Granite. What had happened was, they moved into what used to be Rockers, used all the existing buildings, I think they only put one additional saw in, but that was just an upgrade of sorts. That didn't, did not, was not an issue, noise with the current infrastructure where Rockport or Rockers had it. The issue arose when they purchased a much larger saw and then built that, the room and housing for that saw on the back end of one of their buildings. And then it became much more of an issue when they were finishing the enclosure, yet operating the saw, because they had not completed the doors that were going to act as a significant sound buffer. That's when Emily contacted me, said she was having some issues. Rockport Granite was, in my opinion anyway, pretty receptive of that and wanting to keep their neighbors happy and expedited the.
I think the question goes more to, how did this article come to be in front of us when it wasn't originally on?
See, that would be a discussion whether to, whether to endorse it or not.
Okay.
So, so Terry, can we go back to that hyperlink map and then two pages later, page eleven of nineteen?
Great, two tabs open. Yeah, I think it might be helpful, and I'll take the invitation to, to, to give that background. The, the ORC, as I, as I mentioned, was asked to work on the landscapers in the 902 problem. And we cast a wide net, we did all we could to find out about and hear from contractors who had run into this problem of code interpretation in our office, and how could we fix it? And just a few doors down the road, here was one who happened to be in another zoning district, so he didn't have the problem of prohibited uses. But we thought that the substance of the request was similar enough to what was in the item actually delegated to the ORC to work on it and bring this recommendation on behalf of the ORC. But it's important to note, the Select Board did not assign this task to the ORC, this is a little step beyond. And the reaction of the planning board, I think, has, has partly to do with this, and I'll finish my introduction by accounting for this, this message that's sent by the planning board. The, the planning board thought that, and the, the work should flow, just like all the rest of the work, from the Select Board to the ORC, but even more importantly, the planning board could not mentally block out this information about the performance of the, the site plan approval that they had granted in November 2014, just before I got here, and certain conditions of approval that they thought were not being complied with, the same concerns from the residents came to light at that public hearing. And I advised the board then, please, try to put those facts out of your mind and think three or four owners down the line, fifty or so many years down the line, this is a zoning amendment that's being requested. And the fact of the matter is, double-checked with the town attorney, there is no other better criteria that the planning board failed to apply. When, when it comes to a proposed amendment to the land use ordinance, it can be a gut call and nothing else. And so, the planning board reached that result, not necessarily with the best of their faculties, but the, the feeling was real, and one of the members is here who
Two, who are the members?
Two members, really good sense of, of why it didn't really reflect reaction to a zoning amendment, but actually to, to a site plan. And so, it's important that that's part of the record, and when the property owner learned about this and got advice from legal counsel, that it's not advisable to go forward with this planning board recommendation, but also, one of the suggestions of the planning board that either less property or actually more property, not just over here, but along the whole strip, could be looked at in a more comprehensive way should the Select Board determine to assign this properly to the ORC in the next session. And I know they would welcome the chance to finish what they started here.
So, I want to add two things to that. One, Jamie's description, which he truncated here, was the important aspect of that, was you, you create good and well-written zoning so that it withstands good players and bad players evenly, so. And, but secondly, the, one of the heretofore unvoiced issues, which Emily brought up, was, was the apparent release of silica into the air and into workers' lungs perhaps, not knowing anything about the conditions and that. But I, I think one of the, one of the, the opportunities that this brings up in the conversation, and back to the ORC, is the question, aside from state regulations, do we have anything, state and federal, do we have anything that addresses silica and other potentially harmful airborne particles? And if not, do we want to, or is the existing state and federal rules enough?
I don't know, that's the best short answer. A little bit longer answer, the planning board would have full leeway, regardless of what was approved in the current site plan, to address problems like that with the very broad language that you would recognize in the performance standards when working on an amended site plan. So, if the planning, you know, it's, it's general wear-up player stuff, if the planning board said, "That sounds dangerous," they could require the applicant to bring in an opinion from, from someone trained in that work, and of course, we would do the research to find out if some other state or federal regulation is applicable.
Do we have further discussion?
I just want to throw out there real quick, because I've spent a lot of time at that facility and doing stonework. No good stoneworker in their right mind wants to make any more dust than necessary, and it's not even necessarily a health and safety thing, though that's a great byproduct. The more dust you're making, the more you're eating up your equipment, everything is water-cooled, they try to have their blades last as long as they can. So, I worked in those buildings for many, many months, and they take every effort to, to keep dust down at all costs.
Hearing no further discussion, I will call for the vote on placing this on the warrant. All in favor of placing this on the June warrant? All opposed to placing this on the June warrant? It does not go on the June warrant?
Now I can put it next to it.
You can what?
I said, now I can put it next to it.
Oh. Article Seven, and I'm going to continue on with the original numbering. Shall An Amendment To Sections 1003 Architectural Review Standards In The Land Use Ordinance Be Enacted To Clarify Several Provisions Regulating Non-Residential Development? And The Planning Board Has Recommended This, five in favor, none against, and none abstained.
So.
Do we have a motion?
I move to place, as named presently, Article Seven, on the warrant. I move to place, as named presently, Article seven on the warrant for a town vote. Second?
Moved and seconded.
So we do have one of the, the two- Agitators, no. Very hard-working planning board people who have, who have researched this for the last year and a half, I think, and, and looked at a lot of different towns all around Maine and all around the country. And rather than taking on the Sisyphean act of, of, of actually creating a, an architectural standard, then this is for commercial buildings. What they did is, is backtrack, not backtrack, but, but lowered the, the, anyway. They went through definitions and said presently, "There's no teeth in, in what we have" and it's very suggestive and this, that, and the other thing. So they rewrote several of the, of the paragraphs to clarify and, and to be more of a guide to the planning board. Is that a reasonable?
Terrible is for-
Well-
Summary?
Yep, yep. Terry, if you-
Any more, you gotta go to the mic.
If you're gonna give more than yes or no, we need to go to the mic.
Yes, that's sufficient.
I'm only sufficient.
All right.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
So-
Who's the question of?
I, I don't know yet.
Not me, I'm out.
I don't know yet.
I'll be sufficient and then some.
Perfect. So if I was a, an auto mechanic and I wanted to put up a metal building on Route 1, am I now prohibited from doing that because of these new definitions?
Terry, can we have the other tab, please? And I'm really sorry you're doing that work.
I just heard a note-
Because I was late. Thank you. Go down a couple more pages.
The reality is, right now, if I could, metal buildings are not prohibited, but they can't look like a metal building. And the idea being that there are building materials now which are metal which can look, you know, very nice and things like that. And that's, that's what the architectural standards say right now. And this, this won't change that at all. It speaks mostly to trying to eliminate long, uninteresting facades. In other words, having them broken up by some window elements or maybe some roofing elements or something like that. And so we had one person bring us, it was going to be a, a large industrial-type building, I guess, but had a little office in front of it which had a pitched roof on it and things like that. So that it helps to, to make it look more interesting.
And I guess the only reason that I ask is, I obviously don't want to change the look and feel and the character of this beautiful town that we all call home. At the same time, I want to make sure that we are welcoming and inviting of business development. And I'm kind of looking to the folks that were more intimate in this than I was. Is this striking a good balance, in your opinion? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if anything, I think we, we loosened some requirements on roof pitches and things like that to, to be a little bit more accommodating to some larger buildings where a roof of a certain pitch might not be practical.
Great. I'd love to spend a longer time going through the whole, whole thing, but the, this is a perfect question to make sure that I've hit head-on. Owen, if you look in that sub-two that's on the, the two paragraphs there, the first one gave a long list of exterior finished things that are recommended. We want stuff that looks traditional. But then it says, if it looks like that, here it is. Contemporary materials that have the same visual characteristics as traditional materials are acceptable. And what's deleted in there is a whole bunch of hemming and hawing and throat clearing and, and stuff that might, might obscure that message. So that's, it's an improvement, I hope. And then in the very next section, something that's helpful to the planning board who needed, who asked for more bright lines and less subjectivity in their work, which can never be totally eliminated, but here you have, there are some materials that just aren't suitable as exterior finish. And this is about the, the limit of the, you know, the materials getting blackballed here as, as exterior finish.
I have a question then on exterior finish. Plain unfinished concrete block?
Yes.
I see a lot of that in the foundation of structures. That, you know, you get two or three courses and a little window in there usually, which is the basement. And then you have the rest of the structure, which is typically clavbered or something similar to that. Does that mean we can no longer use concrete block as, as the foundation?
On a commercial building, it's not meant to be an exterior finish. I'm not sure whether foundation itself calls to mind the same problems. As a matter of interpretation, I wouldn't go after it myself. It seems appropriate that-
I, I would think in the collective-
You don't finish a concrete foundation. It's an interesting problem, though.
I, I would think in the collective wisdom of the members of the planning board, they would not object to foundation treatment to make it-
You know, it's under building materials. It doesn't say anything about this being commercial building only.
It does, it's the heading of the section.
The whole, the whole section, the whole darn section is that.
Non-residential development.
But, and, and beating a dead horse, if Jamie goes back down to almost where he was, there, there were also terminology that wasn't very helpful. I mean, New England style is not very helpful, so they, they tightened that up.
Oh, yeah. I remember one of those.
Yeah, I'll just leave it on the purpose statement for discussion purposes. So a lot of red ink there, Owen, getting cut out, especially at the beginning, to, to focus in on the, the very narrow range of problems that we think this ordinance can solve. And if anything, public participation tempted to pull the group the other way. There, there are a large number of people in the town interested in increasing the historic preservation or other kind of architectural review standards. But there is nothing in the ordinance that requires anything of residential construction to comply with this. So one of the more notable issues is, is a house recently constructed in the village. But this would not change that situation. And so there are plenty of voters who are not satisfied and wish we would go further. This is where the planning board and the ORC have met and had a really practical back-and-forth over the language and very happy with the, the product. And I heard a planning board member say, "The ORC took what we had written and made it more concise and more helpful." That's amazing.
It is amazing.
It's a Mumbai moment right now.
Must have had their weevies that morning.
Okay, okay. With all that, do we have further discussion? All in favor of placing this on the June warrant? And our recommendation, do we endorse this? Yes? That is also-
And I do want to second. Jamie put it in his notes, but a couple of the planning board members did a lot of work on this and brought it to the ORC. And the ORC spent a couple of meetings talking about it. But the amount of work that the planning board members did on this was, was really immense.
Yeah, too, too in particular. And, and there is now a collection, a little treasure trove of, of this point in time of what some considerably restrictive ordinances look like and that you can either use to run it up the flagpole or scare yourself to bits. Either way.
Okay. Well, you're, we're gonna need you here for the vote.
I know, but it's, it's okay. I'll be right back.
Okay. No, that's not the one. Is that? All right. Well, we're gonna go to Article eight. Shall an amendment to the section 900 zoning districts in the land use ordinance be enacted to standardize numbering and formatting throughout this chapter? And the planning board is recommending five in favor, none abstained, and none against.
Move to include Article eight in the June warrant. Second?
Moved and seconded. And if I understand it correctly, it's these tables that you're referring to, correct?
Those come a little later. Nope.
Oh, they come later?
Go up a few pages.
Oh.
Terry's on it with my tab here.
Oh, it is this one?
Yeah. Well, it's a sort of a, a book, a bookmark. There's nothing here to look at precisely because what we're doing is just organizing the numbering. The 900s is the section, the, the chapter of the land use ordinance that shows all the zoning districts. And a lot of our work does have to do with those two tables that you pointed to, Bill. But at the beginning of each zoning district, we don't have a uniform way right now of saying, "And if you want to know where the permitted uses are, go to the table at 917." If you're wondering about the standards that are applicable, they're at the table in section 918. So this is just a, a, a filler right now. We have a draft that actually, the completed chapter 900 is available to, to review. But the, what this does is just tell you how we're doing it. It's a formula.
Okay.
So each, each part, each zoning district will start with one of these when you see it in the finished product.
Okay, we've had the motion to place this on. Do we have any, and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? And it's the page before that.
Yeah.
Hearing none.
Sorry, it's so boring. It doesn't get any more administrative than this one. But we need to do it in all the chapters once in a while to clean up.
This was started some time ago, anyway. All in favor of placing this on the warrant? And we, and the recommendation to, to recommend, that is also. Okay.
F O U R or F O R?
F O R. There are F O U R, F O Rs. Article nine, shall amendments to section 917 permitted use table in the land use ordinance be enacted to change the applicable zoning districts where the following uses are permitted, whether by special exception or as of right? Affordable housing, art galleries, barber shop slash salon, boat storage commercial, boat storage slash shipyard and sales, outdoor recreation, and restaurants.
Forgive me, but you gotta go all the way to the front page. This is items one and seven in my, you know, in the earlier numbering. So the, the reason for this, and I've just touched on it, is anytime you're working on a zoning district in the land use ordinance, it also refers to the table. So we have to fix it here and then fix it there. And so this is a kind of omnibus version of the 917 table that includes all of the edits that the ORC touched on. Some of them you, you've already heard about. So the, the hotel use, as an example, if you scroll down to the commercial part of the table, is proposed to be turned into a P where it never existed before. Here it is. So this is just kind of catching up with, with some of the other amendments you've already heard about. But throughout this table, other items you haven't talked about yet this evening. As an example, it might surprise you, but restaurants currently in the downtown, sorry, everyone, it's hard when someone else is driving on the computer. Where's restaurants? Probably up one more.
You had it right there. You were there.
Up, sorry, everybody.
Go back.
Right there. Restaurant. There you go.
Above retail.
So today, to open a restaurant in the 913 downtown zoning district requires a special exception or a public hearing at the zoning board of appeals. Proved that SE is being replaced with a P and would be permitted as of right. And the, that, I can go into any of these in more detail, but that's the, how you navigate this proposed amendment.
Okay, I see. We have any?
And Jamie, just so that the public knows, could you talk about the affordable housing issue?
I would be happy to, with the caveat that I plan not to be the first to mention it. So thank you for mentioning it. The affordable housing issue, right now, so this is cross-hatched because it's proposed to be deleted. So currently, in our ordinance, forgive me while I try to blow this up a little. So, never mind. In our ordinance, the, the residential uses are all grouped together, as they should be. And some of them are P and some are SE. So if you go further down, you see community living facility, residential single-family, two-family, multifamily. So these are all the residential uses. And the use that is not defined in our ordinance, but is labeled here as affordable housing, is purported to be treated differently. So this is a violation of the Fair Housing Act. This is one of the things that we learned through doing an informal, an informal kind of affordable housing audit. And since then, Rick and I have been practicing all the better ways we could think of to say affordable housing. My favorite currently is from Kathleen Neill. It's attainable housing. In any event, you can't treat it differently than other housing. So if an affordable housing project had five units or more, it would be treated the same as multifamily further down, if this proposed amendment is approved. If this amendment's not approved, I don't know what will happen to us, but we will know that we have a violation of the Fair Housing Act on, on our books. Excuse me for moving around one more time on this. Okay, go ahead.
On the flip side of that, for instance, Portland is, is wrestling with creating an ordinance that requires that developments over a certain size have a certain percentage of, of attainable housing. Is there anything that, in the federal law and your understanding, that would deny us that ability in the future?
I don't think so. I hadn't heard the question asked that way before. But the, the inclusionary zoning is certainly permissible under the act and it's used to redress historical-
Reluctance?
Yeah, unfairness was the word I was going for. But to do that, we would begin by having to define affordable. So we haven't done that. And so that's another good reason not to leave this in the position where it is now. But to go back into it, and I've just been to a seminar on how to promote affordable housing last week with Jane LaFleur. The, the first thing you would do is pick your, your target, which would be, is it eighty or ninety or a hundred percent of area mean income? And, or is it something much higher that is still considered a threshold between affordable and not affordable? And putting in the ordinance would just hem you in, in my opinion. So I don't think Rockport's ready for, for that kind of challenge. And this would just bring us back to pure vanilla for right now. Mr. Chairman, I see there's a question in the audience.
Am I out of turn to say two?
Terry, you, you will need to come up to the microphone, so we can, so the recording can hear you and the people at home can hear you.
Terry McKenzie, current member of the planning board. I hope I'm not out of turn here. But you're aware that we-
Stand right up there, dear.
You're aware that we do have a current definition of affordable housing in our definition section?
I hadn't seen this version of it myself, actually.
Okay, I just wanted to- I just wanted to, in wonky fashion, bring attention, everyone's attention to the fact that in the section 300 definitions, we do in fact have a definition of affordable housing and it reads, "Housing for people earning eighty percent or below HUD median income for the market area." And then there's affordable housing units of five units or more. Just redirects you back up to that one single definition. That's all I just wanted to clarify, just in case.
I hope we have more discussion on this, but I'll just add on that one. The gentleman from Pennquist, the, the cap agency who was giving us our affordable housing stress test, told us that that one was out of date. So the, the new percentage threshold is somewhere like a hundred and a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
And I just don't know that we're capable of keeping up with it. And if we try to define it, we'll, we'll be obsolete before it, it comes into play in a, in a project.
Maybe reference the-
But I think-
Main Housing Authority or whatever. Somebody's got to have that.
Well, yes, but the solution that's proposed is even cleaner, you know, which is treat them the same as other housing.
Yeah, and that's the main, main thing that I think the ORC definition, or discussion talked about was the idea that we don't really want to treat it differently than any other housing. There's nothing prohibiting somebody from building housing that might be considered affordable, anywhere where that type of housing is currently permitted in town. And I think by leaving it in the table, I think you leave yourself open to possibly saying, "Well, we don't want that kind of, we only want that kind of housing over here. We don't want it over here." And I think that the idea of the ORC was to say, "Well, let's, let's just, you know, let, let the ordinance stand on its own." Whether it's affordable or not doesn't necessarily impact, you know, where it's permitted.
This is sort of an aside. One of the growing fads around the country seems to be what they call little houses.
Mm-hmm, tiny houses.
Tiny houses, you know, less than, you know, are, are around a hundred square feet floor space. Do we have that covered anywhere? Or do we have a certain minimum size that a dwelling must be?
We do, as of July 1. That's one of the things caught in the net of the main uniform building and energy code. We haven't adopted the energy part of it, but the way that we'd have to address that first, if it is a dwelling unit- We haven't adopted the energy part of it, but, uh, the way that we'd have to address that, uh, first, if it is a dwelling unit, which is where all the fun begins, if you take out some of the characteristics of a dwelling unit, then maybe it wouldn't apply. For example, if there was a common kitchen in some other structure. And you didn't know the day after you gave the C of O that the, the microwave was actually arranged, you know, that there's some issues that go, um, with that, be, is it a dwelling or not? But the, the short answer is, the main uniform building code has some minimums, uh, dimensions that are required in, uh, you can't have a, a room that is less than seven by seven by seven. Uh, a certain perfor- portion of it can be down to five feet under an eve. So it starts to be, um, in the way if, if you're promoting housing through that.
It was just a random thought.
Strategy. Oh, it will come to Rockport and we'll, we'll be somewhat prepared.
Do we have further discussion on this? All in favor of placing this on the warrant? That is unanimous. Uh, all in favor of recommending this to the voters? And that is unanimous. We'll now go to Article ten. Shall an amendment to the section nine eighteen dimensional tables in land use ordinance be enacted to correct certain minimum street frontage requirements applicable in section nine oh seven Rockport mixed business residential zoning district? And the planning board is recommending this. Five in favor, zero against zero abstentions. A motion?
Uh, move to place, uh, currently numbered Article ten on the warrant as read.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Uh, for this one, I'd just like to point out that this is yet another type of, uh, handoff that took place between the boards and the O R C. So we've had some that were, um, not on the work plan and the O R C worked on anyway. We've had some that were on the work plan that the O R C did not address as anticipated. This is the only one where we came back to the select board. It was at your meeting of March thirteenth and said, "We just wanna make sure, are you okay that the O R C is working on this?" Because it came in as, uh, something that a property owner identified as an error. And I think that presents a model for us to keep in mind next year when we do encounter, uh, a late addition, that there may or may not be time for it, but the right move is to come to the select board and say, "What, what do you guys think?" And so this is a basic, uh, fix, uh, very helpful on the part of Greg Haining to identify, um, minimum street frontage. It's basically a standard that, uh, tries to keep things from getting too crowded. And, um, pardon me Owen, if you're, um, starting on the, the page that's
Existing, proposed, existing.
Thank you.
Yep, sure thing.
The next page is the proposed.
I'll skip right to it. And the, um, the standards are, um, suitable, uh, at highway speed for a large minimum frontage, where you don't want driveways, uh, turning up right on top of each other and turning movements getting in the way. And there might also be some sense that to, for properties to reach their full development potential as commercial properties on a fast-moving highway, they need to be somewhat bigger. Uh, and you probably are aware, the, the O R C has hashed out a, a great deal of dimensional, um, standards, including footprint, maximum footprint of buildings in some of the zoning districts. And so what you have here is this ongoing work to, uh, troubleshoot or debug the table that has had all of these possibilities sprinkled into it that used to be written in paragraphs. And so where you see a bunch of NAs, technically there's no standard there for us to apply. That may be intentional or it may be an oversight. The O R C wants to get back to this table, um, for a more thorough review in the next year. Uh, but the particular problem called to our attention was easily solved by, um, treating the few properties that we know of, such as in the request, um, given to us by Greg Haining, that are in the nine oh seven zoning district but not on a highway. They happen to be on a small secondary street in the West Rockport Business Park. Um, there again, West Rockport in the news and for commercial use. But in this case, unfortunately, the, the owner wants to make it possible for residential use also, having, um, had these properties marketed for commercial use for some time without success. So this is a, an appropriate degree of flexibility to add to the, the table. And I don't think there's much more to go with that, but, uh, available for questions.
Okay. Do we have further discussion? All in favor of placing this on the warrant? That is unanimous. And do we wish to recommend this to the voters? That is also unanimous. Uh, the next article is Article eleven, shall the town accept the dedication, eight, accept the dedication in fee simple of all of Bayberry Lane considered part of Ashley Terrace and the Bay Ridge subdivision plan first approved, and, and part of Hawthorne Drive comprising approximately sixteen hundred feet of private right-of-ways located off Old County Road as known in the subdivision plan recorded in Knox County Registry of Deeds at Book seventeen, page one seventy-nine as amended and to accept and establish such ways as municipal roads to be town-owned and maintained. And I will
Move to place Article eleven as read on the warrant.
Except that we wanna say it's shown, not known, but second.
Okay, and shown. Yes, it is said, shown. Okay. Um, and in the explanation, we need to recall that it, the amount being deposited is sixty-one hundred dollars, uh, not the amount written there.
I think we've had a lot of discussion about this and
I have a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
Is the explanation also gonna be on the warrant?
On the ballot? I believe so, Jamie.
Yep.
Did, uh, legal counsel said the explanation goes on the ballot?
Yes, it does, and the terms of any performance guarantee.
Can, can you come back?
Yes, it does, and, yes, it does in the terms, is what he said.
Okay.
Where? Why are we scrolling?
Because he's going to the Hawthorne.
Oh.
They may not need not, they may not need it.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll serve more than those.
The, uh, uh, the provisions of the road acceptance ordinance require that the terms of any performance guarantee actually be mentioned in the ballot question. So effectively, the voters are seeing the business proposition in full.
Another question and not questioning Mike Young. I guess just that number does strike me as a little bit low, but I'm trusting his opinion. And I'm kinda looking all the way down there to Rick.
For the paving?
Uh, that just doesn't seem like a paving number. That seems like an improvement number and maybe some patching.
Well, it's because it's the, the, it's really a patching, they're gonna cut in and then they put on another inch and a half layer on top of that. And it's, so it's not a total re- road reconstruction, re- full-depth reconstruction, it's just putting a layer of pavement. And I, I can't remember the total number of footage. It's not, it's not a huge amount of footage at this point.
Four hundred eighty-eight feet in Mike's memo.
Oh, okay.
This project was previously completed to town specifications, um, you know, per the, the previous director of public works. And so, um, rather than, um, rely on that, uh, the, the, as we do every spring, but in, you know, with obvious reason, we're focused on this development. The public works director and the town engineer went out to inspect. And from however many winters it's been since the last time, it was Steve Beveridge who had given that sign-off before, uh, they identified some more work to do. And I, you know, again, you, you've already touched on the point where it's, it's not my department and I don't have that expertise. And it's just important to make sure that the select board, under the world acceptance ordinance, has, um, received the comments of the public works director. And so, just so that you see how all these are, are ingredients are coming together into a, a ballot question.
To follow up on your question, Owen, um, when the voters vote to accept this, it will become a town road. And we will own the, that piece of road. And then the check that we have, Mike better have that number right because that's all he's gonna have to make the repair to that road. And so I'm, you, I'm, I'm thinking he spent a lot of time. There was some negotiating back and forth with the property owner thought, thinking that was too high. So, um,
Okay.
I'm trusting Mike's judgment on this one.
And then the only other question was just kind of a cleanup thing, the whole his satisfaction.
No, yeah.
There's three people named in that, town manager, Dick Nightingale, and public works director.
Yeah, we, we, that should be cleaned up because, um, as a result of all this conversation, once the, once we accept the check and once we, if the voters do pa- vote to accept it, the town is responsible for doing the roadwork, not the property owner.
So to clear that up, you say, replace his with P W D.
Or, or to the satisfaction of the public works director.
Right, right.
Yep, and you'd like to change that dollar amount.
To sixty-one hundred.
So the, um, the, the, some of the important, you know, messages we're bringing you from these other officials, the, the municipal attorney is also required to review under the ordinance. And his, his advice was, try to get this work done by all means before the town accepts it. And that may or may not be realistic. Uh, and I just wanna call to your attention, our recommendation is to do as we've just described, where you wait to see, is the vote successful?
Okay.
Put the, put the money in the hands of the public works director, as he will be the owner of the road at that time. The town will be the owner. Um, but that, you know, an, an alternative, and I think wishful thinking approach, um, has been suggested to you.
That, that, that would be under normal circumstances where the road was being developed. It had met all the conditions in a fairly quick timeframe. I mean, this has been going on. I've, I've been here almost four years and it's been, we've been negotiating with this for almost four years. And it's, it's just, I, I think people have heard me say, "I'd like to put this one to bed." Um, this.
Okay. Um, I've got a procedural question. Normally after a warrant article, there would be recommendations. And there have been none written in here.
The planning board doesn't get a bite at it because it's technically not a land use amendment.
Okay.
Your recommendation should appear with this question and the budget committees also.
Okay. Then we will keep that in mind.
Has the, has the budget committee weighed in on this?
I don't believe so. I think that they're waiting until to see if there's a budget, a final budget that they need to deal with.
And just to satisfy my own curiosity, it doesn't matter one way or the other. If this gets approved and we get the check, do we have to like vote on approving that check for something? Or does it immediately go into Mike's budget?
We already have the check. I, it, the check came in yesterday.
You just do an in-house thing there. We don't have to, okay.
Show up as a revenue, general ledger revenue and then a general ledger expense.
Sometimes if we accept gifts, we have to do, but this isn't a gift. So I was just trying to figure out how that works.
Part of the agreement for the road.
All right, um, further discussion?
So that, that is a requirement. Those two recommendations do need to appear there.
They were just omitted from
Right.
So we moved to put the article on. Do we need to do anything about the explanation or can that be monkeyed around with later?
Can do it as a men, as you amend it.
Should, I mean, should we vote on that?
I suggest that you take ownership of every word on there.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna move to amend the original motion to include the explanation with the following changes. That the dollar amount be changed to sixty-one hundred dollars. And that the final sentence state, "If approved, this work must be completed to the satisfaction of the public works director."
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is an amendment. We will vote on that separately. Discussion?
If I was to offer an amendment that we take all of Hawthorne Drive, any takers? It's gonna go the same way.
Then we would have to turn this down.
Yeah, you can't.
Because we would no longer meet the threshold as required by the ordinance.
I just wanted to get you worked up again, Bill.
You're doing a good job. Keep at it.
Would I like to do that?
You're a Marine, I know this. You live for that.
I'm being soft, too.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the amendment? That is announced. We now have the amended, uh, article wording. Uh, do we have further discussion on that? All in favor?
Placing on the warrant.
Placing it on the warrant as amended. And now we take a recommendation vote. All in favor of recommending this? That is four zero, and we will have to ask the, the budget committee tomorrow night to do theirs as well.
Right, your, your recommendation and theirs has more of a fiscal impact meaning to it.
Yep.
No longer in the land use arena.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Um, we now have Article twelve. Shall an ordinance entitled Emergency Management Ordinance be enacted? Um, and that was handed out to us the other night.
Move to place, uh, Article twelve as read on the ballot for the town meeting warrant.
Second?
Moved and seconded.
Sure, everybody's leaving now.
We had the fun part.
It's the exciting stuff.
Now the fun stuff starts.
Yeah, um, we have the motion.
Thanks for coming.
And it's been seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you for coming.
All in favor of placing this on the warrant?
Oh.
Yeah.
I asked for, I was talking with people.
You gotta pay attention to us, Marine.
I was paying attention to the people we work for. Thank you for coming.
And then our recommendation, all in favor of recommending this to the voters, that is four zero.
And, and I recommend
Okay, can I ask a quick question now?
Um, what?
Yeah, I got a question.
We've already voted on it.
It's, am I not allowed to ask a question?
Okay. He wants to take a break, so be quick.
So, and it's only because we put an explanation under Article eleven, and I understand why. Well, and, and I feel like I did this the last time, too. I really desire to have more explanations on there. I understand why you can't. There's ballot space. You have to be equal and even with everything. If you start adding explanations here, then you gotta add explanations there. But I guess my question is, and I think I touched on this the other day, maybe with Rick, is there going to be a place online?
Yes, that
Where folks can get better thorough explanations of this prior to
Because it is very confusing, yeah.
It's, it's all super confusing.
Yes. No, I, it, there will be.
Like something to where everything's there, you can click a link.
Right.
Okay, awesome.
All right.
Thank you.
No, I totally, I think, I totally agree with that. This is really confusing, this stuff.
Well, this is also the first time, in my recollection, that we've gone through it in this level of detail. Okay, um, I, we're gonna take a one and a half minute break.
Thanks for coming out.
When I gave you three minutes, it became ten, and I gave you two minutes and it became five or six. Eight minutes, yeah.
Yeah, they're tough.
Rick, how do we wanna deal with this? Rick, how do we want to deal with this?
Special recognition for Landon for making it.
All right.
Yeah, buddy!
Okay.
I don't think he's particularly interested in that. All right, we back?
Landon and I are on the same page.
Okay, we're back here. Um, we're moving ahead now. We have several other articles that we need to discuss. Uh, the first war, first item is an article that does not have a number yet. But if we approve it, it will need to go onto the secret ballot. This is an advisory article only, um, non-binding, but we just want to gauge the sense of the people. It reads, "Do you support allowing retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs to operate in the town of Rockport and the development of amendments to land use ordinance to regulate the location and operation of those uses?"
Move to place the article as read on the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Second, first?
Moved and seconded. Now, there isn't, there would be no recommendation by the select board on this. This is an advisory article if we were to put it on. So, um, just, you know, with that in mind. Owen, you wanted to say something.
So, one of the things that came up when we were dealing with this in my committee on the state level was that terminology, "social club." And I understand where the terminology comes from. And if, if we have to, I would say, keep it. However, retail marijuana establishments in my mind does cover a social club. And unless someone can tell me that I've, that I'm missing, that the definition of retail marijuana establishments does not encompass a social club. It just, it led to a bunch of confusing questions. Social club becomes just a, a vague term that you have to explain to people, which I'm fine doing. But it's basically, it's, it's like a bar, but it, you're allowed to go in there and smoke marijuana if you want to or consume marijuana. I guess I'm just, is establishment?
Do you think there's any more, I mean, for a guy who doesn't know much about this, I figure that that's a marijuana bar and that, uh, retail establishment is like going to the packer store, going to the supermarket and, and buying alcohol there. So, it's not, it doesn't seem particularly confusing, I yield.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I think where there's so much going on, there's so many moving things going on. That's the terminology that was being used, but if you think that is, is the legislature gonna come down?
I, I don't know exactly.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that if our end goal is to gauge the public and where the public is at. It's just my opinion that we would gauge where the public's at by simply keeping retail marijuana establishments. Just my own personal opinion, the social clubs kind of confuse it a little bit.
Wasn't that in what was passed in November? It specifically included social clubs.
It is, and so what I'm, what I'm throwing out there is our, I guess I don't know if we run the risk of making folks in town upset that we did not bring up the social club aspect. And then if we do, uh, work on passing something later, they're gonna say, well, we, we thought it was just for retail sale outlets. But I mean, if I saw retail marijuana outlets, I would maybe view that different than an establishment. I guess I'm just seeing viewing establishment as a very broad term, including social clubs. But again, I haven't.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that, but I don't think the way it's worded is gonna, is, I don't think is a problem. I, I agree that a social club could be considered an establishment as well, but I think having it worded as it is, I don't, I don't think it's terribly confusing. I think it's, it's asking what we want to know.
What if it were to read retail marijuana establishments, comma, to include social clubs and comma, to operate in the town of Rockport?
That makes it worse, in my opinion, because then if you say to include that, then you're by inference perhaps excluding some other things.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring it up only because there were people, I mean, these were folks that had done tons of governmental stuff. And they're going, what's a social club?
I think where this is an advisory question, the public will be very clear on what we're asking, in my opinion.
Yep, okay, I'm all right with that.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of placing this on the June warrant? This would be the secret ballot.
And is there something that will, will say this is a non-binding whatever? Is there some language that will let the folks know our intent and not that this is an actual ordinance change?
Yeah, um, boy, I'm sorry, Jamie left because he's been working with town council on that. I would, I don't remember what he's, town council said.
I'd like to amend the question to include the words.
Yeah.
Um, this is a non-binding advisory vote.
Right, I, I think that's.
Some language along those lines.
I think that's safe.
Well, isn't that already implied by saying, "And develop the amendments to the land use to regulate?"
If, if someone were to, to vote for this and be a proponent for this, and then, and say it got fifty-one percent. And then this board in its infinite wisdom with five people voted three to two to not do something. I would be, if, if I was in the, uh, the fifty-one percent majority, I would feel as though they weren't, that they had, voters had directed this select board. Whereas it's an advisory, non-binding vote, it's, um.
Okay.
It's, you know, it, it allows you to be cynical about either side.
All right, then, how do we want to work that into it?
I, as, as an ultimate sentence, could, could you read back what I offered?
You just said you wanted to, to read the, um, I would say this article, it's a non-binding, um, advisory.
Advisory vote, yeah.
And that would be the last?
That'd be the ultimate sentence.
That would be added at the end, after the question mark.
Would this be an appropriate place to put an explanation?
We're limited to where we can put ex- explanations and, uh, for some reason, the town council said we could put it on the road one and it's not on, and we're not allowed to put them in other articles.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I agree with you. Some of those articles are so difficult to figure out.
Well, they are every year.
And I'm super jazzed that we're gonna have like the online portion where people can dive into it more.
Jamie's already started that piece.
Okay.
With what, the thing, the work that he's done with here was with that in mind, that we can post this and make the links all.
And if this wasn't such a kind of different case with it being advisory straw poll type thing versus what all the other ones are. I just wanted to make sure that that's pretty clear.
Well, that will be part of the, you know, the, when we do that forum.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That'll be part of the discussion.
Still not gonna catch everyone, but yes, I mean, can we separate it so it's the final one?
This would be the final one on the secret ballot.
Oh, and then article.
We're now starting the money ones, which are.
In the open town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great, perfect.
Okay, um, do we have any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor of placing this?
We have an amendment on the floor.
Oh. That's, was it seconded?
Second.
Of course it was seconded.
Yes, it was.
Uh, the amendment is to add a sentence stating this is a non-binding advisory question.
Do you want a pen to get him?
No, no, that's all right. I'm, I'm going, reverting back to my Quaker roots.
We're good.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Now, on the question of the article as amended.
Placing.
Placing this on the warrant. All in favor? That is four to zero. Very good. Uh, that concludes the part of the, of this that deals with the secret ballot. Are, starting here with what is now numbered Article thirteen, these are the revenue items. And the way we always do this and, you know, is that I'll read one and then you read one and you read one and you read one. So we don't all have to listen to me drone on and on and on.
Perfect.
So, I will start with this article. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following as revenue from the following sources to be used in reducing the property tax assessment for the twenty seventeen slash twenty eighteen fiscal year. A, general government, one million fifty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars. B, public assistance, twelve thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. C, public safety, twenty, two hundred twenty-three thousand one eighty-eight." And I'll say that again, two hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars. Public works, one hundred seven thousand three hundred ten dollars. E, culture and recreation, one hundred and twenty thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars. F, all others in cemeteries, sixteen thousand fifty dollars. G, unassigned fund balance, zero. H, special assessments, one hundred twenty-five thousand twenty-three dollars. Total, one million six hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred forty-six dollars. The budget committee has recommended nine in favor, no, none against, and no abstentions. Do I have a motion to this effect?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We received a item tonight. Um, these are the, this is the audited changes to the unassigned fund balance. So these are final numbers. And we are seeing our unassigned fund balance going up one hundred eighteen thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars. Um, this would be the place that we would add any of that money that we would want to bring in for whatever reason.
Wait a minute, what do you mean whatever reason? Doesn't it say that?
This is revenue to offset property tax assessments.
Right, we have.
But that's the only reason, is to offset property tax.
Well, this isn't being, at this point, we are not specifically saying it will offset public works budget or it will offset this budget or something like that. We would just be putting it in to reduce the total amount that we would have to re- raise by property taxes.
No matter how you, no matter how you would spend it, it still has to go.
Yes, as revenue.
Um, and I will move then to amend the motion, uh, to change item G, unassigned fund balance to one hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second. Moved and seconded to change line G to read one hundred ten thousand dollars.
And that says the recommendation from the town manager and the finance director. Um, as we go through this evening, we are gonna be undoubtedly adding some money to this budget on the public works end of things and probably on the library end of things. Um, and where we have our unassigned fund balance is larger than the, the charter requirement. I think it's, it's our duty to, to add this money in. It's the taxpayers' money and to, uh.
And, and I misspoke that really it would be going up two hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars, but the recommendation by the town manager is to reduce that by using one hundred and ten thousand, which means that we will still increase the unassigned fund balance by one hundred eighteen thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars. Am I reading that correctly, Megan?
Good.
Well, there's a few things. The unassigned fund balance as of July one and June thirty, it shows an increase of one hundred eighteen thousand and some change. But then this is the, uh, change in the budget from, is this the previous fiscal year, Megan? Is that correct? In other words, the, we had a revenue surplus of one hundred two thousand and an unexpendable balance of appropriations. That adds up to the two twenty-eight.
Okay.
And then if we take the one hundred and ten out of that.
We are still increasing the UFB by one hundred and eighteen thousand.
As of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Correct.
Yes.
So the ending balance is the two point three at the top.
Oh, okay, yes, I didn't say, yep.
Does that, does that get us just within the threshold that I'm not quite aware of? Or could we actually appropriate more to offset taxes?
Megan and I had a conversation about that today and while the, the requirement by charter is twelve percent and we're exceeding that, um, things have changed so that twelve percent is not really enough to have us avoid having to take out TANs. So that we're, we need a number that's more like, what, what?
Fifteen and a half percent.
About fifteen and a half percent.
Tax anticipation.
Tax anticipation note.
It's a cash flow issue. In other words, at certain times of the year, we may have to, we not have enough money. We may have to borrow money to meet the, the expenses and that comes with a cost.
That's interest out the window.
Yep, so, um, we, we haven't had to do a TAN in quite some time, not since I've been here. Probably before then. I mean, we, we've done pretty well.
Well, that was a combination of both increasing our UFB and moving the dates where we receive the money.
Right. But, y- y- you know, Megan and I talked today about it and, um, there is a, there is a chunk of money in between the twelve percent and what we have. But if we start cutting to, if we cut below this one hundred and eighteen thousand, we're gonna start bumping into, we don't have enough money to pay bills and then we have to go out and borrow money to pay bills. And, uh, Megan can explain the, the ra, the reasons for those, the, the number going up. I, I can't remember them all, but.
So there's a couple of things that played into it a lot this year, uh, the weather. So we spent a lot more in road sand and road salt. Because of that, we had a lot more wages that we paid out in the months of February and March. We almost doubled the wages we paid out last February and March. Um, it seems that people are changing the manner in which they pay their taxes. And it seems based on the numbers that I compared, more people are waiting to the April deadline, closer to the April deadline to pay the majority of their taxes. And you combine all of those factors together and the end of February and March were really rough months for us. So to avoid something like that happening, my recommendation is to not go, go below fifteen and a half percent.
Trust your judgment, just asking the question.
But this would be a good opportunity to push the tax club idea where you can make your payments in twelve equal parts, or nearly equal parts, um, over the course of the year, help your budget out, your household budgets. Okay.
You, you have to be a member of good standing before you can do that.
So, we, we have a motion to add one hundred and ten thousand and it was seconded. This is amendment to the original motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Rock and roll.
Taking the one hundred and ten. That then increases the bottom line number to one million seven hundred seventy-one thousand seven, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Are we ready for the question?
Recommendation, you mean?
The recommend, no, this is for the final, this is on the whole article.
Yeah, you're right.
Then we make a recommendation. On the whole article. All in favor? Now for our recommendation. All in favor of recommending this to the voters for approval? That is four.
Who's my turn?
Uh, yes, it's your turn, Article fourteen.
All right. Article fourteen reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for general government for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fiscal year. A, administration, thirty-six thousand four hundred." A, administration, thirty-six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. B, town manager, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. C, town clerk-
Wait, 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 say that again, 'cause you said two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
No, I think you said it right.
Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
C, town clerk, two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. D, planning and community development, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and ten dollars. E, finance, a hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. F, assessing, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. G, town office building, eighty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars. H, insurance, sixty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, for a total of one million two hundred and eighty-six thousand ninety-one dollars.
Uh, so moved, as read.
Second.
And the Budget Committee is recommending seven in favor, one against, and one abstention.
I will note that, um, these numbers do include a change from the Select Board budget. And that, it's a minor one, but it is a change on the, less than the town clerk budget, which I believe is, is the Budget Committee recommended to include a cell phone stipend, so that number is three hundred dollars higher than the, uh, than what we originally approved for the town clerk's budget.
And there were two other five thousand dollar articles?
Uh, the, there was two for Parks and Rec and one for the library.
Later.
All right. Could, could I- And we have further discussion? Yes.
Could I ask a question of our Budget Committee member in, in the room? Can you just, you don't have to name names, but what was some of the objections of the person that voted against it?
I don't recall who voted against it, the one abstention was, um, because Heaven is Linda's granddaughter.
But you don't remember why?
I don't remember who.
Not who, just what the rationale maybe was.
Honestly don't remember.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I've lost one of our members. Um, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of placing this on the warrant?
Jeffy?
Jeff?
Yes.
You, are you in favor of placing this? Thank you. And then, our recommendation. Uh, we all, do we recommend this to the voters? And Jeff, I'm gonna ask, ask, ask you to come over here. All in favor of recommending this, thank you, that is done. Ken, I'll let you take the next one.
He gets an easy one.
Move to place the following article, currently numbered fifteen on the town warrant, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for public assistance for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fiscal year. A, general assistance, twenty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars, for a total of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor of placing this on the warrant? And all in favor of recommending this to the voters? That is also unanimous.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was, uh-
Okay, well, you're back, you get Article sixteen.
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for public safety for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year. A, police department, six hundred and seven thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. B, fire department, three hundred eighty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. C, West Rockport Fire Station, five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. D, other public safety services, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. E, animal control, five thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. F, harbor master, one hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. G, public safety building, thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And H, emergency management, three thousand ten dollars, for a total of one million four hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Budget Committee votes eight for, one against, zero abstention.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, do we have any further discussion on?
Just a quick reminder, uh, what was the other public safety services, those are contracted out?
Hydrants, traffic lights.
Yep.
Does the ambulance fall under that?
Yep.
Okay.
Further discussion? And I will call for the vote, all in favor of placing this on the warrant? That is good, all in favor of recommending this to the voters, that is also four to zero.
We are gonna have some changes to public works.
Yes.
Do we wanna discuss those before we make the motion? Or, I mean, we have to decide about the Mount Pleasant situation, do we wanna include it in the public works budget, or do we wanna have a separate article for it, and we also have to look at the overall road construction number, I think.
Yes.
I don't remember that Mount Pleasant number.
This was right here. Okay. We had, as we were discussing, we could do, handle this one of three ways. One, we could just roll this right into the line, uh, actually, we already have it in the public works, uh, which is called road construction. Actually, it's four ways, or we could add it into what we ca, what we put in there, and that was line seventy-six oh five, road construction. We could put it into line seventy-six oh six, which is Mount Pleasant Street, which currently we put fifty thousand in. We could alternately pull it out and make its own separate subarticle in here, so it would be, say, C, Mount Pleasant Street, and put the dollar amount there, or we could create its own entire warrant article, call it seventeen A, for lack, lack of a better number right now, and place it immediately after this. I think that's probably our first question. What we did receive from the town manager is the estimated cost was two hundred and forty-three thousand. He was anticipating being able to, uh, reduce that by sixty-five thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents, because that would be coming out of what is left in this year's road construction budget.
Is that number still accurate, Megan?
I'm looking right now.
There would also be the, the balance that it remains in the bond of, you know, it was written here, twenty-three thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-three cents, but, uh, there was a thirty-three hundred of that that had been already allocated for another purpose, so it would be only twenty thousand sixty-one dollars. And for a total balance of, it would come out a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty cents. So somewhere we, you know, if we are gonna continue to go through with this, we are gonna have to go, you know, add in that somewhere.
So the number we need is one fifty-seven, five seventy-two?
And twenty cents.
Well, we don't have tw-.
I know, we don't put, we don't put that in here, we would round that off.
Well, I, I mean, my recommendation is to put it in the public works budget, I'd rather see it there than have a separate article for it. I think it's, and we have a separate line for Mount Pleasant Street, I'm perfectly comfortable putting the, the amount in that line. Uh, but I think it's better to have it in the, we're presenting to the voters a plan for public works and road construction for the upcoming year, Mount Pleasant Street is a part of that plan, and I really don't like the idea of separating it out, um, and doing it on a, as a separate vote.
And I would also remind you, we've already allocated fifty thousand in that line, so we would be further, we would only be increasing that line by a hundred and seven thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars.
Right.
It's actually a little bit more than that, there was another bill paid after your meeting, so we need a total of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
A hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
Five sixty.
Five sixty.
I have a question, following that logic that it's changed since our last meeting discussing it, is it gonna continue to change?
Uh, I don't anticipate getting any more invoices from Garland Orsky until July.
Okay.
Because I raised that same concern.
You did this to them, didn't you?
I second what Ken said.
So in effect, we would ra, increase line seven, seventy-six oh six, Mount Pleasant Street to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred sixty dollars. It was already fifty there.
Yep.
So we would only be adding a hundred and eight thousand to the line, making it a total a hundred and fifty-eight thousand five sixty.
Right. Now, do we have to show, within this next year's budget, do we have to show the funds that we're encumbering over as, um, as income, or are we going to spend that before the, before the end of the year? The, the remainder?
You don't have to show it as income, 'cause you can encumber it, which is done separate.
So the encumbrance doesn't show as a, as a revenue, it's just, it's there.
It's already been appropriated.
Yeah, and in all likelihood, some of that sixty-five thousand and, and change would be expended this year to get us a little bit further along instead of waiting to July one to start digging.
Specific to Mount Pleasant?
Mount Pleasant.
It might or, it-
Specific not to Mount Pleasant. I mean, it's still in the budget to be used as things require this year, so there's a chance that it might not-
It may not all, it may not all be spent by July one, isn't it?
But we are encumbered.
We can encumber it.
You certainly can encumber it.
You have a plan to use it and instead of, well, that's what encumbrances are for.
Right.
And the anticipated road construction line balance, we removed some of the actual balance to cover work that Mike knows that he has to get done, so we didn't even take that into consideration.
Do we have to do quick math to get that number right?
I haven't.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to do some more. But there was also, when, uh, Mike spoke to us at our last meeting, he indicated that there are a number of other roads that he seriously, needs serious work.
Right.
And so that instead of the two hundred thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars we have in the road construction line, seventy-six oh five, that really he needed two hundred and eighty-two thousand, so an additional eighty-two thousand.
I think Ken has notes on that, he's about to bring that up.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too, because, I mean, I asked Mike specifically, if we don't do those roads, if we're gonna lose them, and he's, he kinda said yes.
We'd be coming close.
As definitive as Mike ever gets on something like that, he was, he told us.
We'd be spending more money that we don't have to down the, down the-
So this budget is, is gonna take a significant jump, um, if we do these things, but I, I think we have to. So Megan, can you give us a new total if we increase seventy-six oh five to the two eighty-two? Two hundred and eighty-two thousand number?
Yep, uh, that puts the public works total to one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and six dollars.
Wanna run, run that by me again?
One million seven hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and six dollars.
Five oh six, and that includes the Mount Pleasant number and the new road construction number.
Okay.
And that brings the total up?
To one million nine hundred two thousand three hundred and eighty-five.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna make the motion, um, to place the article currently numbered seventeen on the warrant to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for public works for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fiscal year. A, public works, one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred and six dollars. B, sanitation, one hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, for a total of one million nine hundred and two thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
So that's an increase of almost two hundred thousand dollars, and we've offset it by the hundred and ten from the, um, UFB.
Still going up.
It's still an increase, and I have to tell you that before I came here tonight, I, I looked all through this budget to find someplace where I could find something-
Hundred thousand bucks.
And I didn't, quite honestly, I mean, and I think you, I think that what has been presented to us as a budget has been fairly lean, there's not a lot of fat in it, maybe somebody else would have a different opinion than I do, I don't know. But I, I do wanna make sure that people know that I, I went through that exercise, 'cause it's not an inconsequential amount of money that we're adding.
And we very well may be adding some more, another item or two.
Hopefully not this much.
No, oh, exactly. Further discussion? All in favor? And our recommendation, do we all recommend? That is?
The Budget Committee will get that one tomorrow night.
Yes. Uh, Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for culture and recreation for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fiscal year. A, library, four hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred six dollars. B, conservation commission, eight thousand four hundred ten dollars. C, Parks and Recreation, eighty-one thousand two thirty-seven dollars. Uh, D, Opera House, one hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. E, Library Building, one Lime Rock Street, two thousand eight hundred thirty dollars, for a total of six hundred ninety thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. The Budget Committee voted nine in favor, zero abstention, zero against, and zero abstention.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, here is another one where I think we have some changes that we're coming along with, based on our discussion last Thursday night.
All right, we've got library items, and, and there are also changes in the Parks and Recreation from our previous budget.
Yes, um, and I can, I'm not finding the memo that, uh, the Budget Committee, oh, here I go.
They requested to remove five thousand from line seventy-four oh one, which is the building engineering.
Requested to remove, okay.
And so that was that shows up in this number here, because this number is five thousand dollars less than our budget.
Correct.
That's just A, library.
But-
But Parks and Rec also.
Parks and Rec will have some changes when we get there, yeah.
When we get to there. But, the other night, we directed the town manager to find some estimates, uh, for one survey, um, yeah, a survey, two, mediation, and three, clearing the BACH deed. Uh, estimates on the cost for the-
I don't have a cost on the clearing the BACH deed yet, I requested that, the, it was submitted to the real estate department, I don't have a cost for that one yet.
Then we'll, if we're gonna put it in, we'll have to wing it. Well, let's, what were your findings on the survey?
The, the survey, um, from the, the one, um, vendor I spoke to that responded to me was, uh, between eight, eighty-five hundred and eighty-nine hundred dollars. My recommendation is that you budget ten thousand dollars. I don't think we can afford to do it wrong, I, I think if, if, if we need to spend a little bit more money and make sure we do it right.
This is only the survey?
Just the survey.
Okay.
And then the mediation, um, I have a, a, a call in for another, I've, this, I've been talking to two ni, two mediators. Uh, I spoke to one today, and, um, it's seen, the, got, Mike, it seems like about five thousand dollars uh, would give us a number of, a substantial number of hours of that person on site, um, to work with us. And my expectation is the, the other mediator will probably be about the same hourly rate, and it would give us, um, I think it was twenty-five hours of that person's time doing, uh, ten, up to ten, two and a half hour sessions, uh, he, I think you heard Paul say he thought it could be done in two sessions. A lot will depend on the direction the board wants to go.
What was the total?
Five thousand on mediation.
But a lot will depend on the direction the board goes, um, with how long it goes.
And I, you know, I've been thinking about this the last couple of days, I don't know, maybe the survey results tell us what we need to know, I don't know.
I, you know, I think-
I'd like to think that we-
I think, I did talk to, um, the, the, um, person today who, um, said that there's two, uh, two, basically two approaches, um, but the survey results will certainly help the, the mediator mediate the reality of the facts on the ground. And it will certainly help that. You know, the challenge is, is that i- is the mediator gonna be mediating, uh, a whole discussion on, on site again, or, or not site again? And if, if, if sites on the, if sites on the table that they're trying to mediate that, that's gonna take, we'll be start- we'll be starting back several steps and have to go through that whole part process and paying a mediator to do that. She said that often what she gets, the work she does is with DOT and F, um, the Federal Aviation Administration, where DOT or the Federal Aviation Administration has decided this is what they're gonna do, and then it's mediating, um, that decision to, to help, um, answer the needs of the particular people who are affected by that decision.
Question. At the, one of the last meetings we had, uh, one of the folks generally associated with the library did bring up, it seemed that there was maybe a little bit of a desire by the library folks to use some of the endowment money. Did anyone follow up on that, and does this play into the conversation we're having right now?
I'm liaison, I did not follow up because they have not had a meeting. That was one member of the four members that they have, and that's the first time that has come up in any of their discuss, you know, that, that subject has not come up during their discussion.
And I liked that the board did not make the presumption that they were going to put money towards that, nor should we, but I just thought if they had in their conversations become comfortable with a certain amount of money, then maybe it would make this conversation easier.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, uh, it's appropriate for us to appropriate the, uh, what we think is the right amount of money.
And hopefully not have to spend it.
Hopefully not have to spend it, uh, B, if we have to spend it, um, hopefully, you know, the library committee. I think, I think that one person also indicated that they may be in a, uh, position to also get grants, uh, from outside of our ecosystem, uh, financial ecosystem, um, but, uh, but I don't think we can, as, I think it's inappropriate for us to presume anything.
Can't assume that.
And, and I apologize for the metaphor of a, of a loaded weapon to our head, but we would not, we would not wanna do that, in the same way, we would not wanna do that to the library committee. We would not wanna hold them to something that.
No, and that's fine, it was only, did someone, did we get definitive word from them that they're happy to? Because then that would change the conversation.
Well, the other question I have is, right now we have, well, in the printed budget, we have this fifteen thousand dollars in the line for building, engineering, architecture. The Budget Committee recommended that that be reduced to ten thousand, and that's what shows up in this number here. That takes that into account. And I guess the question I ask is, given the survey and mediation and things like that, do we anticipate that we're gonna get to the point in the next fiscal year of spending any money on architecture?
Well, I.
I would hope so, but.
I, I would, yeah, I would hope so, and I would hope, I mean, I, I think we need to make that number whole again. And I know now all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're, we're talking about twenty thousand dollars in total. But, you know, we still are holding out hope for a November, uh, budget, and there's a lot of work to be done up to that point, and, and, and we're holding out a hope, it's not, we're not careening towards it wildly. I think we've, we've learned our lesson on trying to rush things, uh, but same time, we don't wanna go into first gear.
I mean, I guess that's my question is, is what, what is the realistic probability of having something ready for November, given that we're gonna go through this process, which is gonna take some time?
Even if it were to wait to June, you'd still need to have the architectural work done.
Right.
In, you know, late February, early March.
But that's an area I think that we could reasonably request the library committee to assist in the, uh.
Well, but again, I don't, I don't think we can assume it.
No, I know, we can't assume it, but we could request it. Cause it, you know, it's gonna depend on how quickly this moves ahead as to whether or not we need, you know, coming up, and I would also, this is where we would also wanna put money in to clear the BACH deed. And I think we should put at least a nominal amount in. We really don't have an estimate on it. We do know how many there were, and, and I, you know, it stuck in my mind somewhere when you, when Helen was making one of those presentations, that somebody put, said fourteen thousand. But I don't remember, I, I just wrote it down on the top of mine, you know, fourteen thousand, and I don't know where it came from, and I don't recall who said it.
That's a lot of jet trips.
I know, there's a lot of jet trips.
Seems high.
I know, I, I agree.
It would seem, seem like a number of between five and ten would be a number that, you, you know, there's, there's, it's not that, it's not simply that piece, it's the legal pieces of tying it all together, even if you get all of the, the heirs, um.
Well, I think, as I said, in the budget development, I think we need to move forward on contacting the heirs ourselves before we get the lawyers involved, because if we got the lawyers to do it, it's gonna cost us way more money to do that.
They're, they're still gonna have to do their work.
Yeah, at some, at some point, they have to do their work, but if we don't, if we can do the preliminary work at a much lower per hour cost than they can, then I think we serve ourselves well by doing that, and we can present then to the lawyers. Here, we've got everybody on board, everybody's willing to sign, you just give us the documents that need to be signed, and we're done.
Yeah.
Um, and do the filings that need to be done. So I, I endorse that process.
Don't you think that some of those people are going to engage attorneys when they get a, uh, a, a not? Let me back up. I think we should at least run our friendly letters past the attorneys to make sure we're not saying, we're not shooting ourselves in the foot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And promising stuff we can't promise. And, and I don't think that letters from attorneys are necessarily unfriendly things. But, um, if you wanna take a two-step approach to it, great, I think we should just vet those letters.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I mean, that's, I, I guess my, I would rather have letters go out to these people from the town.
Sure.
And yes, if the attorneys wanted to look them over, I think that's, that's perfectly appropriate, that's not that costly.
Would that fall under our standard?
Probably not.
No?
Probably.
I don't know what's.
Well, part of it may.
If it's just correspondence, it might.
Part of it may.
Yeah.
So if we do it properly, then it, it wouldn't actually be an additional cost, because it would fall under that amount that we paid them to do standard stuff.
I think where the extra money's gonna come is if they have to do any filings, or, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They have to actually, you know, put in some court documents, but that may be down the road a while before we are able to contact everybody.
Would friendly responses from the heirs without going to signing documents, would that get us seventy-five or eighty percent of the way to what some of the citizens want to hear? I mean, it's not binding.
I, I think we have to get the bind, I think we have to get something binding at some point. I think if we have, if we're showing that we're working on this and we're contacting heirs, I think it will make the citizens happy.
And, and we, and we have fewer to contact at this point.
Until they split, yeah, if they, if, no, I'm not talking for ten years, yeah.
If you were to put an amount of money in, like, say ten, say five thousand dollars in there, it would give you a, a number, and it would give you a starting point, and you could then start to say, you know, is it worth continuing to spend more money, are we, you know, as we get, go into the budget process, are we gonna overspend this or not? At least if you have a number in there.
Five thousand.
Okay, now, I wanna just go back for a moment. Seventy-four oh one, building, engineering, architecture. Do we put it back up at fifteen thousand, or did we leave it at what the library recommended of ten thousand?
The Budget Committee recommended ten thousand.
I'm sorry, Budget Committee, we left it at ten thousand?
I thought it was twenty.
This number up here indicates that it's ten thousand, because this number is five thousand dollars less than the total here.
Yep.
If you're asking what this board wants to do.
That's what I'm asking.
I mean, I would, I'm fine with going back to the fifteen, I think, uh, you know.
Okay.
I think there's gonna be work to be done, no matter.
Plus, we're adding another twenty thousand, so it comes up to four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. Eight oh six, for the library. Twenty-five thousand more.
Four seventy-nine, right?
Four seventy, that's what I said, four seventy-nine, eight oh six.
Yep.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand more.
Yep. Second.
Okay, that was, that was taken as a motion, uh, and a second.
An amendment.
On amendment to the motion that was already on the floor, dealing only with the library. Further discussion?
Are we voting just on that amendment?
We're just voting on the amendment to change the library line from four hundred fifty-four thousand to four hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight oh six. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Don't like having to spend that money, but.
I know.
I don't know what else to do about it.
Otherwise, we're not gonna go very far anyway this year. Uh, the next item, the next thing we had a note on is the Parks and Recreation. Find it. Um, the, but, the Budget Committee recommended add, um, adding one thousand, two hundred and three dollars to line thirty, fifty-three oh four, which was.
Fifty-three forty, I think.
Fifty-three forty, you're right, fifty-three forty, which is to purchase the remaining trash cans. Um, I think the other night we agreed to that, but their second request to increase, um, line seventy-five, twenty-five by five thousand to help with the cost of the route one sidewalk, we said no. If I, uh, remember our discussions correctly.
Just real quick, Helen, what, what does that do with that plan that the Parks Committee had worked out to come up with our share of that, of the? Right, I'm sorry.
Please.
Thank you.
Losing my voice, anyway.
I don't, I guess I don't.
It ju, it just pushes it off for another year, because we have to have nineteen, nineteen thousand, I think it is, this year, and then, um, twenty-something following year, so it, they.
And what I guess my question is, is I don't recall this number being part of our conversations, because what we had worked out in pathways was the pathways reserve. We weren't, we didn't do our calculations based on five additional thousands of dollars.
Right, right.
That's just an amelioration for that year.
That's which happened in the Budget Committee, not in pathways. Pathways was going to use the, the reserve money plus what was originally in the budget to make up the nineteen for this year, and then put off the rest until next year.
And we would budget that in.
Which would take up the second half of that sidewalk, uh, matching fund for DOT.
Okay.
I think Pat, I think Pathways was trying to eat, make it more even, so that we, they were putting some more into this year.
And I was just trying to clear my head about, like, I didn't remember this five thousand being part of our pathway specific discussion on how we were gonna make it make sense for the town, so then I'm good with cutting it.
Lose your, uh.
So, in effect, that line remained at eight thousand. But the other line, fifty-three oh, fifty-three forty, just somewhere up there, there it is.
Fifty-three.
Oh, fifty, there, okay, general maintenance supplies. Instead of seven thou, um, yes, instead of seven thousand, they wanted to add twelve hundred and three to it to make it eight thousand, two hundred and three. And I think we blessed that one.
That makes your Parks and Rec total seventy-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Say that again?
Seventy-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Seven, okay.
Which makes your total seven hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars.
One hundred and forty-five?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
We haven't changed the.
Oh, alright.
Hundred thousands.
Alright, uh, now, do we have? I don't know, we didn't, we already changed it for.
We don't have an amendment on the.
We have to make an amendment, amend Parks and Recreation, so we're adding in the, we're accepting the trash can number.
Yes.
And we're not gonna increase the, uh, pathway reserve number.
Oh, that's why he asked about one forty-five, because the, we're adding one thousand, two hundred and three dollars?
Yes.
So, that should bring the one forty-five up to three forty-seven, right? For the total? Where are you? I'm, I'm with Megan, she, she, her, her total.
Yeah.
Um, for Parks and Rec, she said seven-ten, one forty-five, which backs, which backs out.
Now, that was the whole total.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Total up there already.
That total, but that total was just altered by a number less than a thousand.
No, it wasn't, because this, the, Megan's numbers up there include the Budget Committee's recommendations.
Sorry, gotcha.
So it's, basically the total is reduced by the five thousand, that we're not putting back into the pathways reserve, but increased by the twenty-five thousand that we added to the library budget.
Right.
Right then.
Okay, well, I will move to amend the motion currently on the table to change the Parks and Recreation number line C to seventy-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
Move, seconded.
That right, Megan?
Yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure.
Um, further discussion? All in favor of that amendment? That is good. So now the bottom line is seven hundred, ten thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars. Um, are we ready for the mo, ready to call the vote on the total article as amended? I'm hearing no objection, all in favor? And then, our recommendation, are we unanimous to recommend? We are. You wanna read this one?
It's a shorty.
Yeah.
I'll just head it down this way.
Uh, this is the article currently numbered nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for long-term debt, parentheses, dent payments for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen fiscal year. A, debt, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, for a total of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on this?
Budget Committee nine-four, zero against, zero abstain.
Correct. All in favor? And our recommendation, recommend four-zero.
Okay, before we have the Article twenty motion, I have a question. And that is, the, uh, county fees shown here don't include, the county assessment, if I can find it, which is a big number. Is that, is that the correct way?
That's because they can't vote on the county, we have to pay the county assessment. These two are optional.
Okay.
So someone adding up these lines would not come to the true town budget?
This ninety thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars is less than Knox County Assessment.
County assessment is, where is county assessment?
The total county assessment is.
Nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars.
Right.
We have to raise and appropriate that, don't we?
We do raise and appropriate it.
Where does it?
But, these, the nine-one-one and dispatch services are contracted services, which we opt to take. We can't not pay the county assessment.
Are we just, the, the county is one of the three bodies that we collect taxes for.
Right.
So it doesn't come into our budget, that's what, uh, okay. It's the school district, county, and our own budget.
Got it.
Alright.
Well, then I will move.
We pass on the bad news.
That was gonna be a tough one.
I will move, uh, the article currently numbered twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for county fees for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen fiscal year. A, county service, E nine-one-one, sixty thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. B, county service dispatch, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, for a total of ninety thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Second. Give it to my gentleman.
I'm just, I'll take it.
Sort of curious, it's why those two are separated out like that? You know, what's the difference between E nine-one-one, which is what you do, you pick up the phone, you press nine-one-one, you get the, you, you get the county dispatch.
E nine-one-one is the addressing service. So, it's all the GIS, all the county software type things, it's two separate.
And so the dispatch is our portion of the physical people?
The dispatch is, right.
Is our share.
That's more the EMA side, where the dispatch is the Knox County Regional Communications Center.
Okay, we have the motion, all in favor? And our recommendation, all in favor of recommending, alright? Jeff, you get it, turn.
I make a motion on Article twenty-one to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following for cemeteries, provider agencies, RES East, and special assessments for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year. A, cemeteries, fifty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars. B, provider agencies, nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. C. C, RES East, six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. D, special assessments, six thousand, eight hundred dollars, for a total of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Budget Committee votes nine-four, zero against, zero abstain.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Glad the provider agencies are back.
Yeah?
Leonard would be proud.
Nine thou, only, not even ten thousand. Alright, all in favor? And to recommend, all in favor of recommending? Very good. Four, zero, zero. Who wants Article twenty-two?
Oh, sure.
We're done with the money.
Uh, this is the article currently numbered twenty-two. It reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer of all unexpended balances to fund balance and to authorize the overdrafts that may occur in the town operations in the 2017-2018 budget to be taken from the fund balance."
Second.
Budget Committee nine-four, zero against.
Any discussion? All in favor? And our recommendation, all in favor?
Article twenty, we'll bounce back and forth. Article twenty-three, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of tax abatements and applicable interest from the property tax overlay account." And that's a process, and the Budget Committee votes nine-zero-zero.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I just have a question. So if they shut this down and we got a poverty tax abatement request before us, we wouldn't even be able to hear it?
It would come out of the UFB and...
This takes it to come out of a certain account, at all.
If they vote it down, we pay it out of UFB.
It's an interesting way of looking at it.
Okay, I was just curious.
It's one of those things that only the assessors can understand.
That's why we hire them.
And finance directors, obviously, because she wasn't smiling. Okay, we have the motion, it's been seconded, all in favor? And our recommendation, yes? Very good.
I'll take one for the team here.
Hello, thank you.
Shall the town move the following article currently numbered twenty-four? Shall the town vote to confirm and ratify the following reserve accounts in the amounts as shown below? All being amounts that have been maintained in the associated accounts from prior town meeting appropriations, proceeds from vehicle sales or the sale of goods, or from the undesignated fund balance. And authorize the Select Board to make expenditures from those accounts in accordance with the Rockport Reserve's account policy dated February twenty-seventh, 2017. One, police vehicle and equipment reserve, nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Two, policeman department career development reserve, eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Three, federal forfeiture reserve, seventy-seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Four, fire apparatus reserve, three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Five, public works equipment reserve, twenty thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Six, video equipment reserve, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Seven, opera house building reserve, forty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety cents. Eight, Harbor Masters Boat Reserve, eight thousand, forty dollars and six cents. Nine, Harbor Masters Boat Engine Reserve, forty-eight hundred dollars and fifty-two cents. Ten, Marine Park Infrastructure Reserve, zero dollars, zero cents. Eleven, Lime, Killen, and Kramer Locomotive Reserve, zero dollars, zero cents. Twelve, Recreation Facilities Reserve, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Thirteen, Pathways Reserve, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Fourteen, Cemetery Reserve, zero dollars, zero cents. Fifteen, Employees Accrued Benefits Reserve, eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Sixteen, Computer Reserve, five thousand, seventy-nine dollars and nine cents. Seventeen, Accounting Software and Hardware Reserve, zero dollars, zero cents. Eighteen, Solar Power Reserve, zero dollars and zero cents. Explanatory note, the reserve accounts listed in this article are already in place and are funded in the amounts shown. The town's auditors have recommended that the status of these reserve accounts be confirmed by town meeting vote to ensure that they are properly authorized. Non-lapsing accounts and the Select Board is authorized to expend funds from these accounts in accordance with the Rockport Reserve Accounts Policy.
Seconds.
Moved and seconded. There's a question here. It shows the line, Budget Committee votes, and there are no votes.
That's because we didn't have the warrant article written at their last meeting.
So this is one that they will have to discuss tomorrow night.
And I had another question, can you scroll up, please, whoever's scrolling?
Kind of a mystery.
Keep going, keep going, keep going, yeah, it's amazing, okay, stop! So, shall the town vote to blah blah blah, albeit blah blah blah, associated accounts from prior time meetings, appropriate proceeds from vehicle sales and the sales of goods are from... When we did our most recent iteration of cleaning up the reserve accounts, didn't we put gifts in that language somewhere that we could accept gifts for that? And I only bring it up, should the language here mimic our new reserve account policy language? And am I remembering that correctly?
The policy, it refers to the Rockport Reserve Account Policy that you adopted dated February twenty-seventh, 2017. So if it was adopted that way in the new policy, then it would be covered.
Is that, okay, so you don't need that language in there because it's in?
Yeah, in accordance with...
What we approved February twenty-seventh.
They're approving it in accordance with the, with the Rockport, the reserve policy.
Cool.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And our recommendation, yes? That is, all in favor, two-on-zero. Article twenty-five, "To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of three million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars established by state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the previous warrant articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the current property tax levy limit." Parenthesis, "By state law, the vote on this article must be by written ballot," end quote.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And there is, I don't know what the fate of it is, but there was over in the legislature, a bill to change that to where you didn't have to take the secret vote if you didn't want to take the secret vote.
Oh.
Yeah. And LPC unanimously endorsed it, even though half the LPC members never take the vote anyway.
That's going to go to state and local, right?
Probably has already been to state and local. That was one, that was an early one. It's neither here nor there.
Anyway.
Anyway, questions on this discussion?
This is the LD-one limit that we're authorizing to exceed.
To exceed. Is that number, the three million, still correct?
It's, that number is an educated guess until tax commitment time, which doesn't happen until August.
Okay.
Well, no, the limit, though, is, is the limit unknown?
Because we don't know the total growth until commitment.
So we're voting on something before it happens?
Well, we're voting on the best known number.
You're going to exceed the limit, even if we had ten million dollars worth of growth.
All in favor? And our recommendation? Good, thank you.
Oh, it's me.
Hey, if you want, I'll do it.
Article twenty-six currently reads, "To see if the town of Rockport will vote to authorize and direct the Select Board or its duly authorized designee of the town to, A, exercise the quote 'put' option described in the sixth amended and restated agreement of the limited partnership of Penobscot Energy Recovery Company." A limited partnership, and, B, to execute and deliver on behalf of the town such documents and to take such further actions as the Select Board or said designees may deem necessary to appropriate in order to exercise the above-described quote 'put' option and to assign the town's limited partnership interest in the Penobscot Energy Reserve Company Limited Partnership as contemplated thereby." Wow.
I see the lawyers got their hand on that one.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Moved and seconded.
That's that first payment, the smaller payment?
Yes.
Yep.
That's our share, like, seventy-two thousand, I think, coming to the Midco Solid Waste, effectively to the four towns, and we get a, I want to say it was like thirty thousand out of it.
So, much like the school budget that refers to something that happened before, this refers to another document, and in and of itself is not a great explanation, but it refers to the...
This, this document goes back to the nineteen nineties, I think it is.
And, and...
When we all joined the MRC and bought shares to keep that above, floating.
It's an art to make this stuff as confusing as they make it.
No, no, it's an art to make it as, as straightforward within the legal context.
Yeah.
It's that legal context is the annoying part.
You, you have to put your elbows out and defend against anything that might happen.
Yep.
Or go to law school.
Okay, we have the motion, it's been seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And do we recommend this to our citizens? That is a yes.
Article twenty-seven, "To see if the town will vote to transfer the monies received for its equity interest in PERC, P-E-R-C, to the Midco Solid Waste Corporation landfill closure accounts."
Second.
Moved and seconded. I wonder if we should spell out PERC? The article above it spells out, Penobscot Energy Recovery Company. Does not say that that is PERC.
Having just voted on the previous one and having the attorneys go, why don't we go the whole thing, parentheses, PERC, and then do the same thing on this one?
There are twice in the earlier one.
Right, I understand that. Can we modify, do we dare?
Let's, let's deal with this one first.
Okay.
I move to amend this to, instead of saying P-E-R-C, to write it out as Penobscot Energy Recovery Company.
And then followed by PERC in parentheses.
Before you second that, is there any desire to change "received for" to "received from"? It reads "find both ways," I'm just curious.
No, I think "for" is correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are receiving it for our equity share, and we are giving up our equity share.
Not receiving it from, we are, okay, it's fine. Second.
Okay, we will spell out.
On those ears.
That was the motion, it's been seconded. All in favor of spelling out PERC? That is unanimous. Now we have the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion? And that is unanimous, and our recommendation to our citizens is "for."
Getting a good workout.
You can use the other hand once in a while.
Uh, move Article twenty-eight.
Before you do that, do we want to go back and revisit Article twenty-six and put PERC in parentheses?
I would support that because I think there are people that know it is PERC, and that would have a half a clue as to what's happening once they see that.
Yeah, and you're not changing the substance of the article by putting that in.
Yeah, it's fine.
We have a motion to amend Article twenty-six.
I move to amend Article twenty-six to have the acronym P-E-R-C in parentheses after both places of which it appears in Article twenty-six.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? And the question, does that change our recommendation vote?
No.
No.
Didn't think so. Now we can go to Article twenty-eight.
Alright, I move Article currently numbered twenty-eight, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon on such terms as they deem advisable and to execute quitclaim deeds for the property. The sale or disposal shall be made only after consultation with the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, except for the purpose of clearing title or of reconveyance of real estate to the original owner, or in the case of timeshare units, reconveyance back to the original owner or the Timeshare Estates Association of Unit Owners. Property to be disposed of by written policy and on terms the Select Board deem advisable." Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Why is Conservation Commission named? There's got to be a good reason for it.
Because occasionally there are some pieces that we pick up that Conservation Commission would say, "That would make a really good boat landing." And then three years later, we say, "Nah, that didn't work out."
But...
The Conservation Commission would tell us it should be a boat landing?
Well, but sometimes there are places where if there's an ecologically sensitive area or something like that, like, we've had a couple of these little gores or small chunks of property come up and the Conservation say, "Well, we'd like the town to retain ownership of that because it's a stream and we don't want anybody else to be polluting it," or something like that. That's why it's there.
As opposed to selling it to the neighbor, the abutting property.
I can follow that, I just feel like then you could also make a compelling argument why Pathways Committee should also weigh in, or Recreation, because what if it's abut Smarge Jones? It's all good, I don't care, I was just curious.
Remember, we had that piece of property that came to us right on, down on Chicky?
Yeah.
And before we could sell it to the abutters, we had to get Planning Board and Conservation Commission, you know, just to say, "Yeah, that's a good idea." So...
Cool.
Yep. Um, all in favor? And it's on the warrant, all in favor of recommending this?
Make it even, switch it to the left.
Yep, very good. Article twenty-nine, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of wastewater thereon on such terms as they deem advisable and to execute quitclaim deeds for the property. The sale and disposal of which will be made, shall be made only after consultation with the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, except for the purpose of reconveying title or reconveyance of real estate to the original owner. Property to be disposed of by the written, by written policy and on terms the Select Board deem advisable."
So you really said clearing title when you read that?
Yeah, I heard, that's what I heard.
That's what I heard, too.
Second.
Of clearing title, I thought that's what I said. Okay. Um, discussion? All in favor? And do we recommend? We do. I, you know, it just occurred to me, I wonder why we don't have to step out and become wastewater commissioners to deal with this one?
There you go.
Article currently, currently numbered thirty, reads, "To see if the town will vote to set October sixteenth, 2017, and April seventeenth, 2018 as the tac, tax installment due dates."
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Those are weekdays, right? Perfect.
All in favor? And do we recommend? That's good. Your other arm getting a good workout?
I think we'll bounce to, I'm sorry, we're on thirty?
Yep, thirty-one.
Thirty-one. The article presently labeled thirty-one, "To see if the town will vote to set October seventeenth, 2017, and April eighteenth, 2018 as the tax delinquency dates and to fix the rate of interest on delinquent taxes at seven percent interest per annum, per year."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I had a, I had a question. What if you don't make it to a whole year?
What if you don't make it, it's, it's...
It's not rate, but it's pro-rated.
Pro-rated.
You can't make it to a year because you get a lien on your house. But by the time the next one comes around, you've already got a lien, your action against it.
But if you come in a day late, you have to pay one percent, or seven percent.
One three-hundred-and-sixty-fifth of seven percent.
All those in favor?
All in favor? And do we recommend?
Yes.
Okay.
I learn all kinds of stuff.
Article, move the Article currently numbered thirty-two, "To see if the town will vote to fix the rate of interest on delinquent wastewater charges at seven percent interest per year." Second.
Moved and seconded, and the seven percent is set by state.
Perfect.
You guys have to change that.
I'm...
All in favor? And do we recommend? Yes.
Article thirty-three currently, "To see if the town will authorize the Select Board and Treasurer on behalf of the town to accept gifts, real estate, and certain funds, including trust funds that may be given or left to the town." Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And do we recommend?
Article thirty-four, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept those conservation easements which the Select Board deem appropriate in the name of the town of Rockport. Provided, however, said conservation easements are first considered by the Rockport Conservation Commission and the Planning Board."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? And do we recommend?
Article thirty-five currently reads, "To see if the town will authorize the Treasurer to waive the foreclosure of tax lien mortgages pursuant to thirty-six MRSA section nine forty-four upon a finding by the Select Board that ownership of the property subject to the lien would be contrary to the town's best interests."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All, all in favor? And do we recommend? And I will read thirty-six. "To see if the town will authorize the Select Board to enter into boundary line agreements with abutting property owners to establish the boundary line of any property of the town, including boundary lines of the rights of way of roads."
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? And do we recommend?
Article thirty-seven, "To see if the town will vote to authorize a tax collector to..." Article thirty-seven, "To see if the town will vote to authorize a tax collector to enter into standard agreements with taxpayers, establishing a quote 'tax club' unquote payment plan for commercial and/or residential real estate property taxes whereby: One, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his or her estimated and actual tax obligations for the current year real estate property tax. Two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement. Three, the town authorizes the collector to accept tax club payments for current year taxes, which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes. Four, the, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late, and the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due date, plural, as the interest date or dates and rate as other taxpayers who are not participating in the tax club. Five, only taxpayers who do not have outstanding tax obligations for prior tax years are eligible to participate in the tax club program. And six, taxpayers wishing to participate in the tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter an agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax collector."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? And do we recommend? All right, what else? That is the end of those. Um, I think we are now on item G. Vote to set the town meeting times as stated in the first paragraph of the June twenty-seventeen Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Did anybody just move to, and then read that? I move to set the town meeting times as stated in the first paragraph of the June twenty-seventeen Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
We need to specifically state that time in this motion, or is that good enough?
This is what was provided to us.
All right, well, that's good enough.
Yeah, because it's, it says, it says in here.
Yeah, okay.
What the, what the times are. All in favor? Very good. H, uh, this is vote to sign the Budget Validation Referendum for MSAD twenty-eight and five-town CSD warrant and notice of election for Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty sixteen, seventeen.
So move. Second.
This is one of those that we're gonna spend a lot of time signing when we do.
Yeah, we sign originals for everything.
Uh, discussion? All in favor? The next item is vote to sign, gotta get to the right one here.
I move to sign the MSAD twenty-eight referendum warrant and a notice of election for Tuesday, June thirteenth, 2017, to construct and equip a grade five through eight middle school on the site of the existing Camden-Rockport Middle School.
Second.
Question, the referendum warrant, where does that get read?
Well, it's not our document, so we're just saying, put their document on our ballot, much like we collect taxes for them.
Yeah. It's all there.
I just, I thought that there was something where they wanted to allow monies to be... It's only one question?
Well, that's all that will appear on the...
Because I could have sworn from a budget meeting that they, there's some monies that they want to use to offset some of that cost?
That's incorporated in the budget, and that discussion will happen in the meeting that's approximately four or five days prior to this meeting. So that's a, that's an allocation of, for them, you know, their version of, of an allocated fund balance.
I guess I just thought it was gonna be a standalone thing.
It, much like any of the articles that are voted on at annual meetings, they'll be, when you go with your body to the, to the...
And reject that.
You can reject that part of it, yeah.
We have the motion. It has been seconded. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, the next item that we have is a quitclaim deed for the municipality of the town of Rockport to Richard Benner, map twenty-six, lot two seventeen, four oh seven, West Street.
I didn't see that in my packet.
It was the very last, last two pages that I got. Do we have a motion?
I move to sign the quitclaim deed for the municipality of the town of Rockport to Richard Benner, map zero-two-six, lot two-one-seven, four oh seven, West Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Assume that he's paid his taxes. Okay.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor? That's another item that we need to sign, sign, sign. And we have, that's all I have on my agenda.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? And don't go away because we've got a lot of...